Monday, May 15th. It is 6:30 PM. We're starting a little bit early because we're going to take the first case, case number 2021, Wall Street Development Corporation, 48 Burns Ave. And this is a 40B that we've been working on for quite some time. We've gone back and forth with a number of hearings. This is actually a remand case where the zoning board had approved a development and then we had a revision. It was denied by the zoning board. It was appealed by the applicant and it was sent back to us. And we have now, we're coming to the end as far as time that we have to complete this. So, we've had a draft decision since last Thursday. I hope board members have had a chance to review it. At this point, what I'd like to do is just entertain any final comments or questions that people have about the decision that we've had before us. And I think there's one thing that happened, I'll just say, today we got a letter from the town engineer, Carl Baldoff, about one of the conditions that we had put in had to do with the street width. And he was, you know, gave us a few options that would be best for how to proceed as far as the engineering aspect. I don't know if board members got a chance to see Mr. Baldoff's letter, but basically it came down to if you allow the smaller street width than allowed, then we should look at having granite curbing throughout the project. That was his conclusion on that. So, we can address that condition.
Yeah, we do.
Anybody have any questions or comments on the draft decision?
Yeah, I have just some line edits which I can give to Patrick that are not substantive, just like using defined terms and then just using them throughout the decision, things like that. But my first, I guess substantive comment was on page five, there's a couple of paragraphs, 24 and 25, that look to be repeats from earlier paragraphs, 10 and 19. So, I just think we should delete those.
Page 45.
It's on page five of the draft, and paragraphs 24 and 25.
Okay.
And I'm saying that paragraph 24 appears as paragraph 10 in the decision, same.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I guess it stayed in the same thing. I guess that's fine.
24 and 25 can come out.
Then on page seven, there's a reference in paragraph 33 to, in the first sentence, to judicial findings. And I wasn't certain what that referred to. I don't think there's been any judicial, I don't know if that's just a typo or not, but I was, I just wanted...
Judicial findings is before this, though.
Judicial, like, I think of as court findings as opposed to...
Yeah, that's from the HAC. So, that's where that's the reference to, that's actually judicial findings.
Okay, but they're not a court, so I would refer to them as like the, you know, HAC findings or something like that.
They're legislative, I mean, they're a judicial body in a sense. They're not a court. Yeah. You've included it in the pass, is what...
And on page 11, about halfway down, sub- paragraph G, it says complies with order of conditions issued by the Conservation Commission on November 4, 2019. But there's a superseding order that's noted on page 13 of the decision.
That's the DEP superseding order, not the Conservation Commission. So, the ones that they're from Landis is, are from the Conservation Commission's decision, which is the first one, that they wanted to appel throughout this.
Okay, so that's not the order that was superseded by the DEP?
Sorry, what?
That's not the order of conditions superseded by the DEP?
No, no, it's the local.
Okay. Maybe we could just clarify that then under the local bylaw? I just think it's, there's, it calls for compliance with this order and then there's a reference two pages later to a superseding order from DEP. And if this one is under the local bylaw, it should just say, "Under the local bylaw."
She's better cut.
Does that make sense?
I mean, it kind of says it in the, I guess I'm, I guess I'm not following exactly. So, "Complies with the order of conditions issued by the Conservation Commission." So, I know that's not the superseding order of conditions, but that's their order of conditions, so...
But it's theirs, like, they would issue it under both the Wetlands Act and the bylaw? The superseding order deals only with the Wetlands Act?
All right.
And this one, I guess, what you're saying, that refers to an order issued under the local bylaw? Is that, we just, I just want to clarify that it's, that those two things aren't contradictory, if you understand what I'm saying?
I can just remove it.
Well, I don't want to remove it if it actually is different than the superseding order. So, if you look at page, let's see. Maybe you could search on the document, but there's a reference to the superseding order of conditions that requires compliance with that as well. And I just, I thought that they were, the original one from 2019 was superseded, that's all.
No, it was superseded. I can just remove it.
Okay.
I think that was added when I talked to Landis. It might just kind of, it might be just a redundant statement, though.
It carried over from...
Yeah.
Okay. So, on the top of page 23, it says, "The proposed extension of Brook Lane will consist of 360 plus or minus feet." And I believe the waiver that they requested was for 845 feet.
That's the total length, but that's, 360 is addition of what's already there.
I don't know, the plan looks like it's more than, much more than half the length of, I guess, the proposed extension should just be consistent with the waiver granted rather than having it in two different places, I think.
All right. Consistent with the waiver granted.
And then, condition F6 on that same page, just at the end of that, it says, "Shall be a minimum of five feet," and I think that's intended to be five feet wide. So, maybe we just clarify that?
Yep.
And then I think on page 27, condition J3 is a copy of what's on condition A8, so I don't think we need that twice.
Yep.
And that's, that's all I have on that.
All right.
Other than the line edits which I can give separately.
So, one document that Lauren just passed out was initial comments received from the applicant. So, they had reached out for a copy of the decision, and these are some of their initial comments. I spoke to the chairman about this. I sat down to talk to the town engineer about a few of them that are more subdivision-related, specifically comment eight and comment nine dealing with final infrastructure. Both those in particular are talking to the engineer. He didn't have a problem with and thought it would be more consistent with how it's usually conducted with the planning board, so those changes can be factored in if the board has agreement. The other ones, I guess I leave to the board's thoughts and discussions. The first one dealing with hours of operation, that's a holdover from the previous decision, so I didn't really have any concerns of that when I reviewed it, just because it's consistent with what our general bylaws are. But again, if the board has any comments or concerns.
No, you're right. That was a holdover because we talked about the safety of people on Burns Ave.
Yeah.
We're not entering through Burns Ave at this point, so I actually, you know, I think we can change that if...
Okay.
And that is consistent with our bylaws. Next one, Patrick?
So, next one deals with construction of security fence. So, the applicant's looking for construction assurance, security fence shall be waived, or no, shall be required at Wall Street's discretion. I kind of gave that to the board. I, you know, discussed it briefly with the town engineer. This is more just an internal conversation. We're not, I guess the applicant's not here to explain his reasoning on it, so I just put that to the board in terms of what her thoughts are on that. I feel like he'd want security fencing, perfectly honest, so...
If he doesn't want security fencing, that's up to the applicant. Do board members feel differently?
I mean, I'd be curious to hear what the neighbors would feel about the security fence or not.
It's Conroy. This is just about security fence.
Jack Conroy, 34, 40 Burns. Construction fence security, first off, you never let the developer decide, "I don't need it," was what you're going to get. And we know the way Mr. Petrosi acts, but more importantly, if you go around any of these houses being done, I'll pick on Pauli Sistinelli on, on, not Short Street, Pauli Lane, you saw when he did his house. Every house now that's getting built or any development within other houses, they're required to put a fence all the way around. So, it's, so for him to say, "I'm not going to put it around," is ludicrous and to leave it up to him, because he'll go wave it in front of the building inspector. So, if you just look around town, you go down 1A, next to Rico's, all fenced in. Any construction project, right, we have now going to town, even the little additions, well, something like Paul Sistinelli's house, completely encapsulated so you can't get to it. There's another, it's called, I don't think, it's Megan's Law, whatever. There happened years ago where the girl fell into a hole that was open. She wandered over. So, they want you always to cover it over, but since then, it's been stepped up. So, now everybody, you're doing anything of size, you're putting a new house in, and you've got someone living here and here, you've got to put the fence up. It's a new subdivision. No, you don't have to because no one's living there, and that's what's happened. That's what, this isn't a security fence to keep people from stealing. It's to keep people, the neighbors, safe.
The new subdivision on Washington Street doesn't have security fence near the middle street.
I know it doesn't, because the houses are within the confines. There's nobody, according to, I guess, where it's been ruled down there, but if, you remember on Pauli Lane, right over here on 1A?
No, some people do it at their discretion.
Mr., I keep saying Paul. Paul didn't. He didn't even know how to do it. I didn't even realize they're making him do it now. But in a neighborhood like that, no. I mean, to me, and you never, ever leave it up to, like I said, any developer, because it's all about the big buck.
Cheryl Hayes-Monville, 8 Brook Lane. So, literally, my house sits right next to the entrance to this new development, and I think for the safety of the three homes that are there, people like to come down Brook Lane and turn around, and we don't want that to be a playground for people to pull in. I think it's a safety issue. I think it's protection of others, protection of the residents who are currently living there, at least at that front entrance, since that is where everything will enter and exit. I would prefer some type of fencing, if at all possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other board members? Do you want the fencing or not?
Well, I think during the construction phase, certainly, there should be some sort of restriction for access into the site. I think, obviously, everything doesn't get buttoned up perfectly because it's during the construction phase, so to know that there's some sort of perimeter set to keep children away, I think. There was just recently a child who fell from a wall in Walpole and will live with life-changing injuries because of that. I think that it's important that we kind of stipulate that they have during the construction. I can understand that, you know, during, while they're planting and doing other remediation to the area, that they wouldn't need it, but I think when you have windows being framed in at elevations that could severely hurt a child who may not know any better, it would be a safety issue that would be beneficial to the town who's, or the butters who brought it up and anyone else traveling through the area.
Okay. Dave?
My only question would be as relates to construction fence, which, just for the record, I agree with, but are we talking about wrapping the whole site, every building as it's being constructed, obviously, because it's a pretty big project, goes in phases? So, would the requirement, if given, be every development as it's being done or just the front, that the entrances on both sides, like it can, we can just keep going? That would be my only point of clarification.
I'm going to just read the language of the waiver.
Yeah, please.
So, "Construction security fencing shall be utilized at least until the first occupancy permit is issued to ensure the safety and security of the site for the benefit of surrounding neighborhood and the applicant. Six-foot-tall chain link fencing shall be utilized for access gate at the entrance to the site. Walpole Fire Department shall have a Knox box placed accessible at the entrance to the gate during the construction process. A security contractor shall be utilized to open and close the site daily and confirm and mandate the hours of operation for the site personnel." So, that's, we've standardized this, kind of...
Yeah, yeah. The way I read that is just the entrances to the site being fenced along.
Okay, so, keep that one? Next condition, repaving the entire length of Brook Lane. Just direct to that? Yes, Mrs. Campbell, good evening.
Good evening. Kathy Campbell, 31, 35 Burns Ave. I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure, are you saying it's only at the, the safety fence is only off of Brook Lane in the entrance of the project?
No. It says, what it says is, "Shall be utilized," you know, so, you know...
I think it's the entrance to the site.
For the site, yeah.
So, the access is to Brook Lane only, but the fencing will be utilized for the entirety of the site.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought I misunderstood that. Thank you.
Next one, about repaving the entire length of Brook Lane.
So, this one kind of ties also into, I guess, comment number six dealing with the existing cul-de-sac on Brook Lane. And, you know, as chair, we kind of had a conversation earlier about, this is kind of a question to the board in terms of whether or not, do we want to condition the project to remain private or allow it, you know, if the applicant wants to, intends to have it become a public way at some point, let the process happen as it happens? But it's been kind of a back and forth for this, for the hearing, really. It's basically, obviously, it doesn't comply to the subdivision rules and regulations, and even the attorney for the applicant has mentioned that, you know, it's up to the board's discretion if the board wanted to condition it to remain private, you know, that's, that's the board's call, so to speak, if the board doesn't...
But this is about re...
Yeah, but the second part, really, dealing with the cul-de-sac on Brook Lane.
We've already said, that is not, it's not his property, and that is a town-accepted road, and if at some point somebody wants to go to the select board, they're the road commissioners, they can decide what to do with that cul-de-sac. But definitely during any construction phase, we're going to leave that as is, and I don't see, I see no benefit for the town to take out that cul-de-sac, the existing cul-de-sac on Brook Lane. Does anybody see a need for that?
I mean, do we want to say if there's any damage done to it during the construction that that obviously needs to be repaired or resolved?
Well, it's already in the, it's a condition that we already talked about that, you know, they're going to be digging up on Brook Lane to do the water main connection and stuff, so they're going to have to. Next one, Patrick?
The condition must also, so this has to do with condition F4, this condition must also permit a one-foot grass strip or pavement width of 24 feet instead of the 26 feet. This, I guess, goes back to the comment letter from the town engineer, Carl Baldoff.
And let me, so, it just came out today, the town engineer said, you know, there were a lot of concerns about the road width and everything. We spent a lot of time talking about that. So, one of the things, we can either leave it the way we had it, or the town engineer gave a couple of options, and one of them was to have granite curbing the entire, the entire way. That was what he said in his letter that came out today, if you have it in front of you. He said that was the, you know, the optimum, or I forget what we already used, but that was his first, his first choice. Or we can leave it the way we had it, where it was Cape Cod berm. We spent a lot of time talking about this, except on the radii, which would be the granite, granite curbing. I'm fine, I'm fine either way.
His preference is one, right?
What's that?
His preference is number one, which is granite up the whole way.
That's what the town engineer thought was...
But he said to remove the grass strip, which means go out the whole way.
But have granite the whole way.
Granite the whole way.
And this has to do, really, with, if there's going to be a 40-foot right-of-way in a 26-foot roadway, you're limited in terms of space and to be able to account for the grass strip.
So, what do, is that, you have the town engineer's comments. First option would be the most durable, so. What do you think?
It was always in the favor of the granite.
Okay. And now we have from the town engineer saying that that's the most durable. So, that would be a change, Patrick. Instead of what we talked about last time, 26, the one-foot Cape Cod berm would now be replaced with granite throughout.
So, you'd have to go back into the waivers?
Yep. What's that?
Let's try to find the section. So, I guess that's, section 5, 7, A, B, C, and D, curves and gutters of the waivers. Currently, it's approved in part, and then it goes to condition F4, so I guess wouldn't affect...
We're changing, we're modifying the condition.
Yeah, but you'd have to modify the waiver as well.
Okay.
If you want, if you want granite curbing throughout, I think the way we had is only granite curbing along the radii, whereas Cape Cod, the board agreed to elsewhere.
Okay, so what we can do is we can just say that it's still approved in part, but now it's...
Well, it would be denied, rather.
He asked for Cape Cod.
He asked for Cape Cod, and if the board wants to switch it all to granite, that's...
Okay, do people want to revisit the waiver?
I guess my only concern is the, in the 40B context, that we have a significant local concern, you know, and what the basis for requiring the granite throughout would be, how we would justify that, local concern being, you know, safety presumably, but...
I do think it's covered because the town engineer gave us a memo that says it is, that is the most durable, durable option. I thought we had a nice compromise before, so I'd be fine keeping, keeping that if...
I was going to say, you could, you could just leave it, if you want, board wanted to keep it, then it would still be approved in part. We would just factor in the one-foot grass strip within condition F4.
So, that's essentially option two?
Yeah.
Well, not really. You talking about from the town engineer's letter?
Yeah.
No, that would be a 20-foot, 24-foot roadway with one-foot Cape Cod berm and two-feet of grass strip. So, if the board wants to keep it at 26, which we voted on last time, what the applicant has mentioned, that is, you would need to have in the waiver, or not the waiver, the condition, would need to reference a one-foot grass strip, because he doesn't have the space to accommodate a two-foot grass strip for the 26-foot roadway.
But the engineer also said that the one, well, one-foot grass strip is not practical at the top there.
Yeah, but, it's unpractical, yeah, and it's also, it's a limited amount of space, I guess, if you wanted to put it to the applicant, but it, I don't know. So, there's the two options, really.
We knew that this whole, this whole thing is based on a limited amount of space.
Yeah.
So, so, I think that we can either leave it the way it is and, you know, with the, with the partial Cape Cod berm and granite on the radii, well, we can start changing around. We put a lot of talk into, thought and talk into this last time, and I personally would either say, go with the town engineer's optimum one, which is granite throughout, or with what we, what we had as our decision, and just leave it like that. I think that makes sense. Bob?
Yeah, I mean, I suppose it'd be, we should keep it the way that it was. That would be my idea.
All right. Okay, next one has to do with condition F6, repaving the existing sidewalk on Brook Lane. The applicant is objected to that.
It seems to be the same theme as the road, right?
Yeah. It's, it says, we say it's outside the work area. I don't think, it should be done, but the town can also do it if the town decides they need that section paved. It's true.
Yeah, I would say that most of the utility tie-ins would be done in the street, not in the sidewalk, so I'm not sure how much disturbance the sidewalk would undergo to justify requiring that personally.
Mr. Petrosi, good evening.
Sorry I'm late. I found meetings out at 7:00, so anyways, let's, if you don't mind talking a little bit about Brook Lane. So, we show the cul-de-sac being removed and a continuous sidewalk coming in on Brook Lane. Our position is, we don't have any objections to making improvements to Brook Lane, as we've shown on the plan, but we can't do a piecemeal approach, which the board has... But we can't do a piecemeal approach, which the board has, what I've seen in the decisions so far. So if the board is willing to agree to the continuous roadway from Brook Lane, from Union Street into the project, and allow us to remove the cul-de-sac, as we've talked about, then we have no problems with reclaiming the road, repaving the road, and doing the sidewalk continuous through. So I think that's really kind of where we're at.
Okay, so that's fine. So we can leave that in? He just said that redo, fixing the sidewalk is, is-
But the other, the other part of the decision, that is, the other conditions that are in there don't allow us to do that, because the, there's a condition in there that says that the cul-de-sac is to be unaltered.
What, how does that affect the sidewalk from Union Street to the access point into this?
Because it cuts right across the cul-de-sac. So in other words, it follows-
The cul-de-sac on the other side, or the sidewalks on the other side?
It follows the roadway, the pattern of the roadway that we've designed, so.
So.
Can't have it both ways then.
We're not going to, this, the cul-de-sac is not part of your property, so we're going to just let the select board, who are the road commissioners, they can do whatever they want with the cul-de-sac.
I understand, but in your decision, you're saying that it's going to remain unaltered, when you perhaps should be saying that, that work is subject to the discretion of the road commissioners, rather than make it a carte blanche of not being permitted.
It's not part of our permit, so.
I actually do understand, so this goes to condition F12, dealing with the cul-de-sac. Well, kind of along with what the board is saying, if the board, the board doesn't want to issue or make a decision regarding the existing cul-de-sac, and you want to have something in the condition referencing the road commissioners, I guess that kind of opens up-
My understanding is the zoning board sits in the same position as the road commissioners. So you do have the authority from our legal counsel that this board has, stands in the same position as the road commissioners, and has the legal authority to approve that work.
So we've spent a lot of time talking about roadway length, safety. I see no advantage for the town to give up an existing cul-de-sac to a road. And by the way, how do you actually give up a cul-de-sac? There's even questions about that. You know, the cul-de-sac, the land is still going to be owned by the town of Walpole. It's not as if neighbors get a piece of property out of this. And the road, we've already said that there's concerns about safety, as I just said. So it doesn't hurt to have that cul-de-sac on Brook Lane. And I wouldn't change, I wouldn't change that at all. If in the future, people want to change it after this is built, that's up to them.
I totally disagree, but he's going to keep saying that. Now, if it is true what he said, and the two houses that affected on the cul-de-sac should be part of the application. So it's either one or all, right?
We're not, we're not concerned, I mean, that's-
I'm just, I just want to point it out, when Mr. Petrosa and I have our weekly talks, we can talk about that, but it's just, I wanted to point that out, is now if you're saying it's part of it, they got to be part of it. So it's one or the other.
Okay. Next one, Patrick? What, how do people feel, anything on that? Just, it's common, I mean, look at South Walpole. We had them redo the sidewalk all the way up to the South Walpole Common. It is, it's reasonable condition mitigation for any kind of development for something like this. And this is, we're talking sidewalks, short distance. Anybody?
I think that personally, by looking at the plans, since the sidewalk currently on Brook Lane is on the southeast side of the street, that it does tie to other ideas by the developer. But I don't see any issue in saying what's there shouldn't be affected during the construction phase. Excuse me, I haven't walked on the sidewalk to know whether or not it's holding up or not, or if it stands the potential to be damaged. But in my opinion, I don't think that that needs to be repaved. Okay, so I think originally, when we looked at the condition and set it forth off of Burn's Ave, the sidewalk, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that ties directly into the street, which was more of the concern in that situation. Whereas this looks like it's set back a little bit from the edge of the street. Over directly on it.
Okay, yes?
Cheryl Hayes-Monville, A, Brook Lane, the sidewalk. So the sidewalk is past my neighbor's house. The sidewalk's not in front of my house. It's not in front of my next-door neighbor's house. So the sidewalk, I'm sorry, it starts at my neighbor's house. It's not in front of my house at all. I have asphalt, like, that goes up to my grass. So it actually starts at the next-door neighbor's house. So the entire street, like, technically is not sidelined right now.
Okay.
Just so that, like, you're aware of that. And I did have one other question, I didn't want to have to come back up again. So just going back, so I have an understanding of the construction, seven to seven. Does that mean, just so I don't lose my mind, like, in a few months, does that mean, say at like 6:00 to 6:15 in the morning, that like, we can start like staging? Because on Brook Lane right now currently, if there is any tree work, road work, anything like that that goes on on Union Street, Brook Lane is a staging area. So all the trucks park on my street. So then we have our morning coffee, and, you know, we wait for everybody to show up before we actually get going. So I'm just kind of wondering, you know, at 6 o'clock or 6:15, you know, do we experience morning coffee break and things like that? Or is it like, no, you really can't start work till 7, but you can stage at like 6:00 or 6:15? Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay.
And, no, they, they shouldn't be staging on the road, you know, it's-
It's conditioned to be contained entirely within the site.
Right, but I'm just saying, say like if we're on-site, right? Can we like, you know, have our trucks running and our coffee, and, you know, checking in with each other, and what about the game last night, and so on and so forth? I just, I just wanted to ask the question.
It should be 7 o'clock.
Okay, all right.
Work, work arrives at, at Brook Lane.
Okay, thank you.
Next one, Patrick?
So I didn't, just, the board want to wait, keep that, move that? Didn't get a clear answer.
What do people want on repaving the sidewalk? Drew, it sounds like you're okay with taking that out.
Yeah, I would agree with Drew on that.
Tim?
Okay with leaving it open.
All right. This, yeah, condition F12, this kind of goes back to what we talked about, the, the existing cul-de-sac on Brook Lane. So essentially, I would have to change the language to be what the board wants in terms of keeping that. That's why it's, I guess, set up the way it is right now. Is if, you know, the removal of existing patuminous cul-de-sac on Brook Lane, as depicted within the approved plan, shall only occur when and if proposed roadway is accepted as a public way. The existing cul-de-sac on Brook Lane shall remain unaltered, with the exception of such work needed to tie into the new proposed roadway. So I think that could probably be altered based upon what the board's feedback is.
Yeah, that, so, we don't even, we don't even need that, you can modify that, so it, the cul-de-sac remains as it is.
Well, there will need to be a tie-in to the extension.
Tie-in, right.
Right, and that's, I think that's the exception that's permitted. So I think-
I mean, do we want to leave it open to say if the town considers allowing it later?
Yeah, I mean-
That wouldn't violate this permit.
We don't, I don't even think we need to say that. At some point after something's built, if people say it'd be a good idea to change this, then they can change it at that point. But I don't see, particularly for safety reasons, why we would take out a cul-de-sac that provides safety for development like this.
Mr. Chairman, once again, this is a, the way the condition is worded, doesn't give us an opportunity to either propose it as a public way until the work is completed. Usually, you complete the work, and then you go and petition the town for town meeting to accept it as a public way. This is worded so that we have to, we can't petition the town for, to accept it as a public way, because the road, the work is not done. So it kind of like, doesn't allow us the opportunity to do that, the way it's worded currently. So again, we would ask that you condition it somewhat differently with the board, you know, if you're not going to act as the road commissioners, then we should have the opportunity to petition the road commissioners.
Yeah, I don't see anything here that says you can't.
Well, you're basically saying that it's going to be unaltered and-
Mr. Chair, could I ask you, would you say removing the last sentence, kind of?
I don't know, I don't have it in front of me, but I mean-
The existing cul-de-sac on Brook Lane shall remain unaltered, with the exception of such work needed to tie into the new proposed roadway. So the, so if that was removed, then the condition would read, the removal of existing patuminous cul-de-sac on Brook Lane, as depicted within the approved plan, shall only occur when if the, when and if the proposed roadway is accepted as a public way.
Again, it requires, to go through that process, it requires us to complete the work, then petition the town to accept it as a public way. I don't see how that condition is. I just think it should be reworked in some other way.
So I think I can go with what the board wants. And if that's something that changes in the future, then that, it may not be relevant to this decision.
We shouldn't be involved with things off the site of this, this project, so. I strongly recommend we leave that just the way, the way it is. It does not prohibit anybody from doing something in the future. It allows the tie-ins as necessary, and then they can go there.
I was going to bite my tongue, but I can't. Cheryl Hayes-Monville, A, Brook Lane. So I do understand the town's position of the cul-de-sac. And a few meetings ago, when Jack had spoken about it, I got it, I understood. But say for my resident who lives on Brook Lane, knowing what that street, road, whatever you want to call it is currently, and going through six years of kind of zoning meetings regarding multiple versions of a project that wants to be built, I don't have any like legal standpoint, it's, it's not my land, so I didn't have some of the issues that were going on like on Burn's Ave. But I knew that I didn't want a through street. So when Lou came to the residents to say, would this be acceptable? And if I could make this a bit nicer, you know, and clean it up, like, would you be willing to kind of work with me? And that's in part why we agreed to it. You know, the gain isn't, what do I gain? I'm going to go through three years of construction or more. But like at the end results, you know, where I'm going to have 20 homes now next to me that I currently don't, I thought, yes, like, that would be nice if you just kind of fold that into your project and make the street look nice, like a nice entranceway. And I guess, from the resident's point of view, I feel like the town and Lou are at this complete impasse, and the people who are going to suffer are really like the people who are living there now. And that really bothers me, because for six years, it was always developer, talk to the residents, get their buy-in, work with them to do certain things. And then we're here at the 11th hour, and it's like, no, residents, you're going to incur the construction, you're going to incur the inconvenience. It's easier for three homes to deal with all that than people on Union Street, and, you know, if we had construction access through Burn's Ave, if that had ever like worked out or changed. So in part, I'm like, wow, what are we asking? We're not asking for a lot. And I just feel like at the end, like, we're going to be the losers. Lou will build his development, he'll sell his properties, the town, like, won't budge. Maybe the road will get paved, maybe it won't, who knows? Maybe there'll be a sidewalk, maybe not. But at the end of the day, I really feel like three homeowners are getting a screw-in. I'll tell you that right now.
Okay, other thoughts on the cul-de-sac?
I just don't see why we would change what's there now.
Anybody else?
I don't think it's the right of a developer to offer a town land.
Anybody else? Okay, so that can-
I mean, I guess the only other thought I had is, if we condition that he puts aside some funding to do that at some point, I think that would accomplish the same thing. But we don't decide what that is, he has to work with the town on that.
Bob?
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate the concerns and everything, it's just that the town, it's the town-owned land, and it's not really part of this, although it's obviously impacted by this project, it's not part of this project. And we, my understanding from town council and previous, you know, meetings, was that we, the road commissioners sit as like a state authority, not, so I don't think we can sit in their shoes for that. So we can't really take the next step to dictate exactly what happens there. As frustrating as that is, it's, I'm afraid that's sort of where we're stuck.
Okay, okay, so that will remain. Condition H9.
The 25-foot buffer zone restoration area shall be planted at discretion of the developer or as seasonal, seasonal conditions permit. I actually don't have a problem with this, and I think that's kind of goes back to when we had this discussion about waivers, how, what was trying to be asked, and what was trying to be preserved with the 25-foot, you know, build zone, is essentially, you know, within the DEP's superseding order of conditions, that you can replant that area, and that's kind of part of, I think, supplemental sheet, C. So I didn't really have a problem with the, the language, I think it's getting a point.
Okay. Anybody else?
It's not, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
I mean, H9E now says that the 25-foot buffer zone restoration area shall be excavated and planted as per supplemental Plan B and C prior to excavation for foundations. And the comment is that the 25-foot buffer zone restoration area shall be planted at the discretion of the developer or as seasonal conditions permit. You know, I think you're obligated to restore it per the plans that were approved by the Conservation Commission, and those plans are being adopted here. So I don't know what sort of discretion the developer's looking for. You know, what's shown on the plan, and what has been agreed to in terms of restoration of that zone has already gone through wetlands review, as far as I know.
So just leave it the way it is?
Mr. Chairman, may I say just a quick moment? So that discretion is meant, you know, if we're in the middle of the summer, you wouldn't want it planted. If you're in the middle of the winter, you wouldn't want it planted. So the reason we're asking for that discretion is because you've linked it to foundation. So if you unlink it, then it's less likely that we would have the problem, because we may be, depending on when the project starts or is ongoing.
Okay, so that I-
It's a seasonal thing.
It's just a timing thing, it's not whether or not you're gonna plant it per the plans, it's when you plant it.
Right, right. It's when we do it, and you gotta maintain it, water it, there's currently no water there, so you, we're kind of like doing it for failure if we don't like...
No, totally understand, I, I thought when it said it planted at your discretion, that you could ignore the plan, that's not what we want.
So, but we have to be careful that we don't take that, the teeth out of that, so I would just say, we can take out, as planted per supervising order of conditions B, C, and just end it right there, don't mention the foundations.
So, thank you.
Okay. Still, everything still has to be complied with.
So, comment eight and nine, these are the previous comments, I mentioned I talked to Town Engineer Carl Baldoff on regarding the completion of Brook Lane, divided payment shall remain only to the extent of the portions of Brook Lane to be constructed within the proposed development. Town engineer didn't have a problem with that one. And then, condition I1A2, final infrastructure, including paving and landscaping, et cetera, is not typically completed prior to the final occupancy permit, security for completion of this work is included in the security posted in accordance with condition I1. So that, same thing, I think, talking to the town engineer, and that language could probably be adjusted per the applicant's recommendations.
And the town engineer was okay with those?
Yeah.
Next one, J1?
J1. As I understand, so this has to do with the, this has to do with the expiration date on a comprehensive permit, so the applicant's comment is, as I understand the regulations, construction of the development approved under the comprehensive permit must commence construction within three years from the date the permit becomes final. This condition needs to be reworded correctly. The condition itself says in accordance with 760 CMR, 560512C, this comprehensive permit shall expire within three years, it shall expire three years from the date that the permit becomes final, unless I, prior to that time, substantial use of the comprehensive permit has commenced or to the time period is otherwise told in accordance with law. So, I think this is definitely something that might have been written by a lawyer at one point, which I took from it, so I could discuss this with town council, but...
It, it's a three-year, it's a three-year permit.
Yeah.
Normally you have a two-year permit, so...
Mr. Chairman, as I understand it, it's a three years to commence the project, not a three-year permit.
You don't have to finish. That's standard 40B wording, that's...
That wording right there?
Yeah, I mean, it's always been, you, once you get your permit, you have three years, and if you don't get, if you don't act on it, then the permit expires, and you can come back and ask for an extension.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I just ask for rewording of it so that it says what it says, which is, we have three years to commence construction from the date of the final permit. You have it reversed, that it expires within three years of...
Expires three years from the date, the permit shall expire three years...
Unless construction has started, or...
It's not, the, the language here is not exactly consistent with the regulation. It's, the regulation says, if construction authorized by the permit has not begun within three years of the date on which the permit becomes final, except for good cause, the permit shall lapse. So this says substantial use of the comprehensive permit, which is...
I could probably just, I could change that out, I think it's...
Talk to town council, make sure that it meshes with whatever they want.
Yep. All right, and then the final comment is, condition, J6, I think he means J9, this is the condition, it's contrary to the town's policy for all other conventional subdivisions in Walpole, the town's practice is to collect trash and recycling materials on private subdivision roadways, regardless of whether the roadway has been accepted as a public way. That is, I think our condition actually writes it...
Is that true, even if it's an association?
If it's association, yeah.
I think they got dumpsters or something.
Well, this isn't gonna have dumpsters.
Right.
If anything, I can revisit this with the board of health and have it consistent.
It's, trash trucks don't go onto private property, so, town, town contracted trash trucks don't go onto private property.
Mr. Chairman, you stand corrected, we, you know, we just built the roadway in Walpole, private way still, town plows it, town collects the trash, post office delivers the mail.
Was it done under a subdivision?
It was done under a subdivision.
Okay.
Like this, subdivision.
Yeah.
So...
I can confirm that and just change accordingly if I need to. And those were the comments received on conditions from the developer.
Okay. With those changes that we just discussed, does anybody have anything else they want to talk about on it, including Bob's, Bob's edits, my comments earlier? Anything else? Bob? I don't think so. Okay. So at this time, we've been at this, and we, it's now time to close the hearing, and I'd like a motion to close the hearing on this. Yes, Mrs. Campbell?
Please, if you have a question, for the public to speak.
Sure, yep. Yes, yes, definitely.
Thank you, good evening, Kathy Campbell, 3135 Burns Avenue, two questions. I just want to ask about Carl Baldoff's letter that's dated May 5th, I believe that recently came in. He references again Sheet 2, number 12. He stands by his previous comment on identifying the ownership of the area of three parcels of land near 136. He maintains that it should be addressed because it is not consistent with a prior plan recorded by GLM, which was Book 672, Plan 99, which is what I was referencing in my letter that I submitted to this board last week. And I was wondering if, I didn't see the draft decision, but is that an issue that has been addressed by the board for conditions in this project?
So, it has...
Can answer that. That is addressed in condition, sort of, what's with the final plans? A13D, so Final Engineering Drawings and Plans that confirms to the requirements of the comprehensive permit and incorporate the conditions herein, the final plan shall also incorporate all conditions and requirements of permitting agencies having jurisdiction. applicable sheets of the final plan shall be signed and sealed by a professional land surveyor of record and professional civil engineer of record. Final plan shall identify the ownership of all parcels or easements utilized within and abutting the project site. Final plan shall be submitted to the board at least 30 days prior to the anticipated date of commencement of building construction or submission of an application for building permits, whichever is earlier.
So, what he just read, the key words are, "The ownership of all parcels or easements utilized within the, utilized within and abutting the project site." So, we're saying that they need to be identified in the final plan.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. And my second question is, all the conditions that previously existed on the January 13, 2020 permit, do all of those get, do the applicable ones get carried over into this particular application, or do you strike those, and how do you handle those conditions versus the ones you're just speaking about tonight?
So, this is the new decision, and unless, unless it changed, most of those are in here. Patrick, do you want to comment?
Yeah, a lot of that has to do with construction, and so, I mean, a lot of it, it's similar.
Okay, so whatever is applicable becomes part of this new, this new decision?
But, this is the new, this is the new decision, that, that other decision is, you know, goes by, this is what we will all be working off.
Okay.
There's, yeah, there's elements of this that are in every comprehensive permit decision that's to do with pre-construction activities and, and construction management plan activities.
Okay. Is that decision available to the public, or will it be after this meeting?
It's available to the public, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Because we're gonna vote to close the hearing. Okay. So, at this time, could I have a motion to close the hearing for the comprehensive permit for Wall Street Development Corporation, Burns Ave Development LLC? Motion? So moved by Tim?
Second.
Second by Mark. Okay, voting on this will be Mark, Bob, Drew, me, and Tim. Okay, this is just to close the hearing. All those in favor of closing the hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? So carried. Okay, now we're gonna vote on the actual decision that we've all discussed, have gone over. Does somebody want to make a motion to approve the decision of...
Due to notice of project change?
Yeah, the decision on notice of project change per Mass General Law's 40B, which was remanded by the Housing Appeals Committee, Docket Number 2020-1, for Wall Street Development Corporation, Burns Ave Development LLC. Motion made by Tim.
Subject to the conditions and the discussions this evening. I'll second that.
Second by Bob. Okay. All those in, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed. Abstained? Okay, so carried. Okay. So, that's, that will be filed with the town clerk in the appropriate amount of time.
So, one other element, this is something we've had in previous decisions, I just threw down there as well, the board wants to authorize the clerk to sign off on their behalf, so...
So, as Pat, Patrick said, did somebody make a motion to allow the clerk, who was Bob Fitzgerald, to sign the copy of this decision for the, for the board? Motion made by Tim?
Second.
Second by Drew. Any further discussion? Okay. And just so everybody knows, that's just so that we can get it filed, and we, all the board members don't have to come in to sign this. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? So carried. Okay, good, that will be filed within, once we get it finalized. And we did have a deadline of next week to get this filed with the town clerk. Okay, very good. So, next case we have tonight, we're gonna do a couple continuances, and if you are here for, is the building commissioner here tonight, the assistant building commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, he's on his way, just a second.
Like, how far out?
Down the hall.
Okay. Okay. First we have, we're gonna continue two cases, case number 23-3 for 1549 Washington Street, and also case 23-12, also for 1549 Washington Street. The applicant has requested a continuance, when are these continued until?
June 7th, but the case 2312 needs to be opened first.
Okay.
So if you could just read the legal notice and record.
Okay.
Yep, 12.
Okay. Case number 23-12, notices hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the Town of Walpole will hold a public hearing in the main meeting room of Town Hall on Monday, May 15th at 7:00 PM on the application from John Walsh, case number 23-12, with respect to property located at 1549 Washington Street, Walpole, within the Residence B zoning district. Application is for a special permit under Section 12.3(c) of the zoning bylaws for modification to a pre-existing non-conforming two-family dwelling that exceeds the impervious surface requirements for residential new use within the water protection overlay district. All those are invited to and encouraged to review the plans and attend the hearing. Okay, so we have opened that hearing, and we are going to continue that at the request of the applicant, and that will be continued until June 7th at 7:00 o'clock here at Town Hall. Anything else on that?
Is the motion gonna be for both cases?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, motion is to continue both cases. Could somebody make a motion to continue both cases?
So moved.
Moved by Judy.
Second.
Second by Drew. Any further discussion on continuing those two cases? They're continued at the request of the applicant. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So carried. Okay, next, next, what we're gonna do is the building inspector, deputy building inspector here now? Okay, very good. So, we have a administrative appeal, and this is for, I don't know, for tanks, the question comes down to tanks on the property, and is the property owner here for this? Okay, okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just wanted to read the public hearing notice first.
Yep. Okay, notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals, Town of Walpole, will hold a public hearing in the main meeting room of Town Hall on Monday, May 15th at 7:00 PM on an application from Kathleen Watson and Kevin Plunkett of Seven Pilots Way, case number 23-15, with respect to property located at 11's Pilots Way, Walpole, Mass, within the Residence B zoning district. The applicants are requesting an administrative appeal from action taken by the building commissioner, Jim Crowley, with respect to his decision that his sighting of the propane tanks at 11 Pilots Way did not fall under Section 6 dimensional requirements, Table 6B1, Residence B, minimum side yard setback of 15 feet, complaint number 23-16. All are invited and encouraged to review the plans and attend the public hearing, so... Okay. So, this is a, a case where the question comes down to some tanks, some propane tanks located near the property line. So, first we have, we'll start out with the building commissioner, and I know Mr. Crowley's not here this evening, but if you want to come forward and explain what your position is on this, and then we will hear from...
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Bob Dugan, I'm the deputy building commissioner with the Town of Walpole. The appellant's came forward to Mr. Crowley, and they pointed out the fact that there were two propane bottles associated with the swimming pool, and they felt that this was a dangerous situation, that they should not be that close to the property line. Mr. Crowley canvassed the fire department, he took to the fire protection officer, fire protection officer came back and said, NFPA 58 dictates that tanks of that size, 125 gallons or less, are fine that close, in fact, they can go right against a, a building. So, they do not rise to the level of safety requirement to have any kind of setback required for the side lot line. There was also some discussion as to whether or not they qualified as a structure. If you look at the definitions under Chapter 14 of structure, it does state that a combination of materials for permanent, temporary occupancy of use, such as a building, bridge, trestle, tower, framework, retaining wall, tank, tunnel, tent, stadium, reviewing stand, platform, swimming pool, shelters, piers, wharves, bin, fence, sign, gasoline pumps, recreational courts, or the like. These are all... These are all large-scale types of structures, and the tanks do not rise to the scale that this is trying to address. That's why Mr. Crowley made the decision that he did, that these did not really qualify as structures as such. I mean, everybody has a mailbox which has a frame. Everybody has a garbage bin that they put out in their front yard. You can't stretch the definition to include that stuff, and this didn't really rise to that. So that's where Mr. Crowley made his decision.
Okay.
All right? Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Does a...does a structure need to have a foundation, or how do you determine if it's a structure or not?
Yeah, that's a good one. The former commissioner used to always say, every building is a structure, but not every structure is a building. Therefore, not every structure requires a foundation, but there are... within this definition, it tries to give enough examples that you can qualify what constitutes a structure. And we both did not feel that that did.
Do you know if other towns would qualify tanks...tanks similar to this as structures? Have you seen that or heard of that?
I have not. So, I don't know if Mr. Crowley has, but I can only speak from my experience in that they don't rise to that level. It's kinda the same as the tank that you have on your gas grill. And the NFPA 58 looks at it the same way. It's so inherently safe that they don't put any restrictions on it. I have letters from the fire department stating such. I also have a email correspondence from the State Fire Marshal's Office to that effect.
Okay, we also have that information in our package.
Okay, I have copies if you need them.
Okay.
Can I have a possession?
Yes.
So as you pointed out, the definition of structure includes the word "tank", and then it has some other items in there, including a bin, or a fence, or a sign, things that don't really sound as though they have to be large in order to constitute a structure. And, you know, it's...I don't know where you draw the line. You know, what's too big, what's not big enough, you know, that sort of thing. The second point I guess I would make is that the fire safety aspects of it, to me, they're obviously very valid, but they're not really zoning questions. The fire department can say that the tank is safe, and per a fire code requirement, could be located as close as the property line, but I don't think that overrides zoning. Would you agree with that? If the zoning bylaw says you can't put it in a certain spot, even though the fire code says that you can, you still have to comply with both, right?
That's true.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else?
Somebody else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there somebody else who wants to speak on this? Yes, Mr. Plunkett. Yep.
Kevin Plunkett, Pilots Way, thank you for hearing my appeal. As we've talked about it, we're here about the tanks, sighting of tanks at 11 Pilots Way. I'm gonna give you a little bit of history of the project. I'll relate what the building commissioner said in emails to me. I'll talk briefly about NFPA 58, and then I'll talk about what the Walpole zoning bylaws talk about tanks, and then I'll talk about property rights. So, in preparing for our previous hearing before this board, we noticed that two large tanks suddenly made their appearance. Evidently, they had been installed sometime earlier, then concealed with large tarps. There was subsequently a mighty wind that blew the tarps to another part of the yard. We have a privacy fence, so I couldn't get a good look at the tanks, but I estimated them to be 420-pound tanks. They appeared to be permanently installed next to a shed approximately five feet from my fence. As the building commissioner has already ruled that the sighting of the shed was in violation of the zoning side yard setback, it seemed reasonable that the tanks were as well. We filed a complaint with the building department. The building commissioner investigated and determined that the tanks were 250 pounds and were in violation of NFPA 58. He ruled that they would have to be moved in order to comply with the 10-foot lot line setback requirement of NFPA 58 for that particular tank size. Upon further review, the building commissioner ruled that the size of the tanks was 125 pounds, not 125 gallons, as the assistant building inspector stated. He also stated that under NFPA 58, that 125-pound tanks had a zero lot line setback. It's implausible that these tanks are 125 pounds, as a 100-pound tank is 30 inches tall and 18 inches wide. A 420-pound tank is 54 inches tall and 30 inches wide, and that's more in line with what I saw. Regardless, these tanks are stamped with their size so that they can be viewed by an inspector. The NFPA is a...an organization that puts together rules for fire safety.
Thank you.
So, they put this code together, it was by the National Fire Protection Association, creating rules to handle liquefied petroleum gas, which is also known as propane. This document is in book form and is hundreds of pages long. The simplest way to understand the setback part of the code is a graphic, which I just handed to the chairman. There are lot line setbacks, ignition source setbacks, and crawl space setbacks. Another thing to remember is that the code is written with tank size in units of gallons, water capacity, not pounds or gallons of propane. Since I'm not confident that the units on the numbers given by the building commissioner are accurate, I'm not sure how to guide the board. I will say that according to various websites, 420-pound tank is rated for approximately 120 gallons of propane. But the code is written in water...in gallons of water capacity. And everything that has been talked about tonight has been in other units. I don't have the access to look at the tanks, to see what the stamp says on it. The building commissioner should have had that ability, and he should have been able to report that instead of saying that it was, you know, 125 gallons...125 pounds or 250 pounds. Regardless of what NFPA 58 says, I am seeking relief under Walpole zoning bylaws, section six dimensional requirements, dimensional regulations. 6A...
The biologists are stuck.
6A, basic requirements reads, "No building structure or use in any district shall be built, located, enlarged, or permitted which does not conform to the dimensional regulations as set forth in sections 6b and 6c of this bylaw." Setback requirements are outlined in table 6b1, table of dimensional regulations. Where in Residence B, the third column from the right shows side yard setback of 15 feet. There are exceptions for lack of frontage and distance from the front lot line. Neither exception applies in this case. One exception is for less than required frontage. The number 11 has approximately 127 feet of frontage. 125 feet is required. For the other exception to apply, the structure must be at least 100 feet from the front yard setback. The shed and the tanks are approximately 55 feet from the front yard setback. Is a tank a structure? Under section 14 definitions, "Structure, a combination of materials for permanent or temporary occupancy of use, such as a building, bridge, trestle, tower, framework, retaining wall, tank, tunnel, bin, and the like." I didn't go through the whole list. I further reviewed the definitions for the document's meaning of a tank. Did the writers mean a tank like a 10,000-gallon cistern, military equipment, or a container for hazardous LPG? Unfortunately, the document is mute on this subject, but given the hazardous nature of LPG, it seems plausible that it was exactly what they had in mind. Now we have interpretations of two regulations with different rules regarding lot line setback. NFPA, for which tanks under 125-gallon water capacity has zero setback, and Walpole zoning bylaws, which has a 15-foot setback, which takes precedence. Section three, enforcement, other regulations. The provisions of this bylaw shall be construed as being additional to and not annul, limiting, lessening to any extent whatsoever the requirements of any other bylaw, rule, regulations, provided that unless specifically exempted, where this bylaw is more stringent, it shall control. Therefore, the 15-foot setback of the Walpole zoning bylaws should control. I also wanna talk about property rights. In discussions with my neighbor, he has said that it's his land and he can do what he wants. But what about my property rights? By following the setback regulations for NFPA 58, a propane tank that has less than 125-gallon water capacity has a zero lot line setback requirement. But that same tank has a 10-foot setback for ignition sources. Therefore, no ignition source could be allowed in the space that extends onto my property. If however, we follow Walpole zoning bylaw setback tanks...setback rule for tanks of 15 feet, the ignition setback is entirely on my neighbor's property. In review, under Walpole zoning laws...zoning bylaws, a tank is a structure. Structures must be setback 15 feet in a side yard in Residence B. NFPA 58 has zero-foot setback for LPG tanks less than 125-gallon water capacity. In addition, Walpole's zoning bylaws take precedence over other less stringent regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Plunkett? Okay. Is there anybody else who would like to comment on this? Yes, sir.
Dan Shay, 11 Pilots Way, seems to be a monthly occurrence, but... so my neighbor was just up here, they were here a month ago appealing the pool permit, if you remember. So, obviously, they're not happy with the pool project, and this is part of the pool project, so they may not have the most objective view of the bylaws, okay? But that's...so that's one side of it. The other side of it is the question you asked about other towns. So, I put the tanks in the location on the recommendation of the pool company that's been doing this for 30-plus years in Walpole and surrounding towns. The gas company that they work with for that amount of time, they put in hundreds of pools. They said they have never had an issue with the location of these tanks. Tanks are 120 gallons each, 120 gallons, and what they're saying is that because of that, there is no setbacks. The building commissioner seems to agree with that, and the fire department inspected it and signed off on it. You know, I'm just shocked if, you know, if this was wrong, there's a problem with the process in this town. It isn't just my tanks, right? I mean, I went on the recommendation of the professionals, the building inspectors supported it, fire department signed off on it. I mean, I'll be shocked if that was wrong. But if it's wrong, there's a serious...there's an issue that goes further than my tanks, right? But, anyway, thank you. Any questions?
Board members, any questions?
I got one. Is there another location a little further away from where they are now?
Can I put them?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, they're in proximity to the pump, right? Which makes sense to try to cut down on the cost, right? And yet, they're...and I'm assuming because of codes, you can't be too close to the electrical in the pump. It's setback, it's 10, 12 feet, whatever. I only have 30 feet from my house to the property line to these neighbors, so if I put it 15, that's smack in the middle of my side yard. I mean, it's just, I don't wanna put them there, I really don't. If I had a better part, you know, I would do it. I'm not trying to screw my neighbor, I'm just putting them where they recommended, in a place that made sense, right?
Gotcha, okay.
Does that answer your question?
Well, I mean, still, if there was another place that wasn't in the middle of the yard, but made your neighbor a little more happy with the location, that seems like a suitable compromise here. But if there isn't, there isn't.
Well, yeah, I mean, plus they're in, right? So, I mean, this is kinda related, but it was another hearing where I'm spending a lot of money because the concerns of my neighbors. So it's in, it's been approved, it's just, you know, at some point, it's getting very frustrating, you know, to keep spending money and change stuff that's been approved by the town.
Dave?
I would just like to state, I mean, the building commissioner went out himself, physically inspected the tanks, confirmed the size. It's noted in his emails and his report, they're in compliance. All the necessary permits were pulled off, inspected by various departments, plus the state, I believe. Also was double verified with them that it was okay, and they said it was fine.
When you say the state, you mean NFPA?
Yeah, the...
Oh, the state.
Yeah, the state fire marshal was also, you know...
Was actually brought in on this.
Yeah, just to double-check, you know, the work of the fire department. So you've had three professional agencies review and sign off on this.
I also just wanted to say, in terms of the board's role, kinda similar to last administrative appeal, you're really, you know, obviously, you know, we have comments from the fire department and the fire marshal, it's really just looking at the zoning enforcement officer who's the building commissioner...
People can't hear you.
The zoning enforcement officer who is the building commissioner, his interpretation of the zoning. So, I guess that's what this appeal is, is do the board agree with the zoning enforcement officer's interpretation of the zoning in this situation, where is the tank, as it's written in our zoning bylaws, is that interpreted correctly? It's really just...
It's a question of what is the tank, and I think that's what, when we heard from Mr. Dugan, that's really what it comes down to.
And the only thing I'd add to that, and just typical of all zoning, especially the definitions section, it can be only as detailed as it can be. When there's areas of gray area, that is where zoning enforcement comes from in terms of interpreting the bylaw. So the building commissioner is the zoning enforcement officer. It's ultimately his final say on...
Oh, actually, it's the zoning board of appeals' final say when it gets appealed to us.
When it comes here, correct, correct. But when it doesn't come here, it's usually the zoning enforcement officer's final call and the interpretation of the zoning.
Just to clarify that in simple forms, so does that mean we're just looking at whether or not this is qualified as a structure or not?
That's how I'm looking at it.
Right, because if it's a structure, then it's required to meet X amount of setbacks. If it's not a structure, it's not.
That's...
Yeah.
That's really what's before us, yeah, so, okay.
Did you see them put the tanks in?
Yes, I did.
How did they bring them into the backyard? On a hand truck, two-wheel dolly?
Two-wheel dolly.
In my opinion, it doesn't meet the threshold of a structure.
Okay, agreed. Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Plunkett?
I have copies of emails from the building commissioner in which he has viewed the tanks and labels them with something different than they actually are. So I'm not confident that the building commissioner is competent to deal with this. He's calling them 250-pound tanks, he's calling them 125-pound tanks, when if you're going to be using NFPA 58, you have to look at what's stamped on the... stamped on the tank as its capacity. So I'm not confident that he's doing this competent.
Okay. So one of the things, that's not really what we're looking at. We're looking at whether the tanks.
I understand that, but people are using that as an argument to bolster that this is not a structure. So I'm just saying that, that I'm not confident in the building commissioner's ability to rule on this.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? Anybody else from the public on this? Okay. So what we have before us is a question whether the zoning board wants to uphold the decision of the building inspector or overturn the decision of the building inspector. Patrick, is that the way you understand it?
Correct.
Okay. So, you know, does anybody want to discuss? Bob?
Yeah, I mean, I understand, you know, the arguments about how big is it or whatever, but, you know, I think our role is just to read the bylaw and apply it as it's written and not to put words in there that don't exist. And, you know, in black and white, it says a structure is a tank. Now, I don't know how we, how we conclude that it's not a structure, given some threshold of size or something that's not set out in the bylaw. You know, I understand that the billing inspector has some discretion, but, you know, discretion's usually applied where it's kind of vague in terms of what the word means, but I don't know, to me, it just says tank. I guess I'd like further discussion on why we should interpret that as having some sort of size component, or because, for example, a bin is also listed. How big's the bin? Is it a dumpster? Is it my, you know, trash can? Is that a bin? You know? It doesn't provide a lot of guidance to the public as to what is allowed and what isn't. It's just states it in black and white, so, I don't know. I guess I'd like further discussion on, on how we would arrive at some interpretation other than the words on the page.
Okay. So I've, I've read, you know, the bylaw, and then I started thinking, when we dealt with the metal fabrication up the road, right on School Street here, there was nothing in the bylaw that specifically defined what they were doing there. And, you know, we went back and forth and, you know, we're trying to figure out, well, is this an allowed use or not? When I read the regulation, to me, with the tank, when they're talking about tanks, they're talking about, you know, commercial, or any kind of large tanks, whether it's a water, you know, a water tank, a, you know, a fuel tank such as you'd see at an oil depot where, you know, trucks are coming and going to fill up, not, not small, you know, not residential-sized tanks. The term bins, I don't, I didn't think for one second it was talking about recycling bins. I thought it was talking about like large, large hoppers and, you know, industrial-scale bins that you'd see at the quarry, you know, a quarry or a grain silo or something like that. So that's, that's how I, that's how I interpreted it, that it's not going to give specific sizes for the tanks, but it was for tanks that were constructed on the site. And I think, Drew, you made the point, how did these tanks arrive on the site? On a, on a two-wheel dolly? That's not a, that is not a construction type thing to me. That's my take.
So if a tank is constructed off-site but is, you know, a thou, you know, let's say it's ten-thousand-gallon capacity, but it's brought on-site and not constructed there, that's okay? I mean, is the dividing line between a tank that's constructed on-site or one that's brought in? I'm just trying to understand.
Could be. You know, I'm, I'm looking at what, what was the intent of the bylaw? And, you know, in towns, you know, we have water tanks, and I'd agree, I wouldn't want a water tank that holds a million gallons fifteen feet from the property line. It would tower over the house or anything like that. So I think that's, that's to me what we're talking about as far as tanks.
John, I would, I would agree, like, for example, when I think like of a tank that would be, I would consider a good, uh, structure right when I saw it, like the Boston Gas Tank in Dorchester, right? It's just a big tank that holds gas, but it is absolutely massive and requires a lot of other additional supporting construction foundations, probably pads, all these other different things that it would be need to have that there. That would be something that I would consider like a tank, or to your point, like a five-hundred-gallon water tank, or something that you couldn't just put on the ground and just wheel it on a two-wheel dolly and just put it down on the ground. Maybe it's on a little cement pad, maybe a three-inch pad, two-inch pad, just for leveling, but I wouldn't consider that a structure. Yes, so based on size is, was what I'm saying.
I'm Kathleen Watson of Seven Pilots Way. I just wanted to mention that propane is a substance that is heavier than air, and if it does leak, it seeks the lowest possible point, as you probably may remember from our last meeting when we were here. Their property is higher than ours. The tanks are less than five feet from our property line. If those leak, it goes right into our property, and then it will go right in, our bulkhead is right in that area as well, into the bulkhead, into our ignition point, which is our furnace. So this is another rationale, is that people aren't thinking that that ignition point is close to our house, even though the property, the tanks are on their property. So that's something I think you should consider. And the other thing is, is that the, the bylaws are written in very imprecise language, and I'm not a person that does imprecise very well. And so I think the word "tank" means "tank," and these are good-sized tanks, almost as big as me. And if they're brought in on a two-wheel trolley, it doesn't matter how they've gotten there, they're there, they're near our property, and it's going to do damage to us potential, but it's there. And I'm very concerned. Thank you very much.
Do you have the map? That one?
Oh, yeah. No, I'm sorry. I forgot.
I'm actually looking at the ten, the number of feet from intake vent on, in your house, which, what the requirement would be, and it's ten feet. Okay, anything else? Okay, voting on this would, any further discussion? Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Okay, so let's, you, I'll ask the applicant, do you want to, do you want to close the hearing at this point?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. At the request of the applicant, could I have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Judy.
Second.
Second by Drew. Any further discussion on closing the hearing? In voting on this will be the five regular members, so it'll be Judy, Dave, Drew, Bob, and me. Okay. All those in favor of, this is just to close the hearing, all those in favor of closing the hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carried. Okay. Now, to the question of, does somebody want to make a motion to uphold the decision of the building inspector? We always do things in the affirmative. On, on case number twenty-three dash fifteen.
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Judy, second by Dave. Okay, any further discussion on this? Okay. So, okay, no further discussion? Okay. All those in favor of upholding the building inspector's decision, which means that siding with, that the tanks would be allowed to remain where they are? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay. So motion carries for one. Okay. Okay. That decision will be filed with the town clerk within twenty days. Okay. Next case we have this evening is. Okay, next case is for Four Betty Road. Notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeals, town of Walpole, will hold a public hearing in the main meeting room of town hall on Monday, May fifteenth at seven P.M. On application from Eric Christiansen, case number twenty-three dash ten, with respect to property located at Four Betty Road, Walpole, zoning district rural. The application, application is for a special permit under Section five-B two of the Walpole zoning bylaws to convert an existing garage into an in-law suite. All those are invited and encouraged to review the plans and attend the public hearing. Okay. We have the file in front of us. If the applicant wants to come forward and explain what you're proposing to do with your in-law suite.
Good evening. I just want to put an in-law.
Would you just please identify yourself?
Oh, sorry, Eric Christiansen, Four Betty Road. I basically just want to put an in-law into the existing garage. We're not changing the structure or anything, just, just add an in-law.
Okay.
They've confirmed that we are ringing.
Okay. So we've got the plans. The biggest, and I, I personally, I saw it, I see you're not expanding, the question is, how does it connect into the house so this is an actual in-law suite and not a, creating a two-family house in?
There's a, there's a breezeway, and we're going to close in the breezeway. We have to add two windows, two doors, heating, and then there's a porch. We're going to close in the porch with windows, insulation, heating, and flooring. So make it one continuous space.
And you understand with an in-law suite, there's only one set of utilities for the house?
Correct.
And there's, in the decision talks about kinship has to be a, a family member that lives there?
Yes.
Okay. And this all gets filed with the, your decision gets filed by you with the registry of deeds.
Yeah.
Understand that?
Okay.
Good. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant on this? Judy?
I was just wondering, you have the bedroom area on the second floor of the garage. Did you plan to have an egress from the second floor out?
Um, no.
No?
No. I mean, it went through the fire department.
Okay.
And they approved it. The only thing that they wanted was smoke alarms through, they want them hardwired throughout the whole entire house now. But they didn't say anything about, you know, an egress going out the window.
So the only way out of the second floor in the event of an emergency is down the stairs? The one set of stairs?
Yeah, same in my house.
Okay.
You know, I mean, I don't have, you know, a ladder or anything going out the windows. I just have, just the one set of stairs going down.
Okay.
And, and that's fine, because, again, it's one of the things that we're, we're clear about, this is not an apartment, it's part of the, it's part of the house.
Right.
Agree.
Yeah. We do have a letter from the health department. Thank you, Drew. The health department says, the health department has no issues with this request. The septic system is designed for a four, for four bedrooms. If approved, a deed recording listing the number of bedrooms is required prior to occupancy. So how many bedrooms is the house right now?
We're using three. One of them is just an office.
Yeah, so.
I mean, it's a fifteen-hundred-gallon tank, and I thought each bedroom was allowed two-hundred-and-fifty gallons.
No, it's based on the, with the septic system, not the size of the tank, but the size of the leaching field.
Okay.
That's what, so right now you have a, a four, you have a four, you have a four-bedroom house, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And one of the things that we would do with a condition like this is say, the house is a four-bedroom house and will remain a four-bedroom house. So that means in the future?
If I go to sell it, it's got to be a four-bedroom.
It's a four-bedroom house.
Correct. That's fine.
Not a problem?
Not a problem.
Okay.
How many vehicles on? Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes.
How many vehicles do you have on the property currently?
Two.
Looks like the driveway's two cars wide.
Correct, yeah.
Yep. I was just taking note of the door. Typically, I think in the past few days, that case openings, coming into the house and separate doors.
Yeah.
Locking it off. So as we, as we look at the plan, you have a thirty-six-inch doorway going into the newly insulated and framed, framed mudroom?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 they're just calling that the mudroom, that's the porch.
Yeah. So one of the things with a in-law suite, the idea is that this is part of the house.
Yep.
And where you're able to close this off with a thirty-six-inch door, how, is there a way that you could make this so that it remained open and continuous flow into the house?
Yeah, we don't have to put the door there. The door's just on the porch, I can just leave the door, we can just leave the door off. That's not a big deal.
Okay. So the entertainment room would go, have direct access into that, that hallway there?
Yeah, into the breezeway, and then there's a set of stairs, and it goes right up to the porch.
Okay.
And then there's another door, so you can get right into the kitchen.
Okay.
I'm sorry, the sunroom.
Into the mudroom.
Um, yeah, into the mudroom, and then there's another door there so I can get into the, into my sunroom, which is right off the kitchen.
Okay.
Do we have four plans of the existing house or just the garage? Am I missing it? Sorry.
Existing first, please.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Can we satisfy the square footage, thirty-three percent or a thousand?
What, the existing house?
The in-law apartment itself.
Yeah, the in-law apartment is going to be, I added it up, it's like a thousand forty-four square feet, but the entire house is thirty-one forty-four, and if you add in the mudroom, that's an extra two-hundred square feet, so it brings it to thirty-three forty-four, which is less than a third of what I would need.
Patrick, did somebody review those? First off, I believe him, and I, I know it's a lot, it's already, it's existing large house. Judy, is more of the house that goes out over here?
Okay, I thought so, because the plan didn't look complete. Okay.
But there's a show in the part that's, I guess, relevant to what we're looking at, how it connects in.
And is there a reason why it has to be one continuous flow? Like, I couldn't leave, because if you look at the house, right, you know, I mean, you can't even see the breezeway from the street. So it almost looks like one continuous house now, you can barely see it.
Yeah, when we talk about continuous flow, we're talking about so that it's not closed, we're saying that it's not closed off from the main house, so.
Right, right, so, so in the breezeway, you know, I have to put walls up, I have to put the door up, windows and all that stuff.
Yeah.
And same thing on the porch.
So it's, I see what's, you have a garage there now, two kind of garages.
Yeah, I have, I have a garage there now, right? I also have the breezeway, and the breezeway has a roof, right? So it almost, it, it is kind of one continuous space, because to add in, you know, walls and doors and windows and then do the whole porch and everything, I mean, you know, the contract is telling me it's going to cost about thirty thousand dollars extra that we weren't, you know, we weren't counting that into it. And then the fire department also wanted smoke alarms in, you know, every bedroom now, everything hardwired, so that's another.
That's just.
Oh, I understand, but I'm just saying, that's another ten thousand dollars, so, okay.
But.
I just didn't know if, is, like, is this just for aesthetic reasons?
No, no, it's, it's so that it's not, first off, what you're proposing is going to look off. to look awesome.
Yeah.
You know, it's so that it's not separated off, enclosed off as a separate dwelling unit. That's, that's what we're saying. It, by having the continuous flow into your mudroom...
Yep.
It's part of, it's part of the house.
Right. And I have to close off the breezeway?
Uh, yeah, that's...
Okay.
Right. You're going to enclose the breezeway?
Right.
Right, because, yeah, because otherwise, this is a separate, separate unit that's not part of the house.
Okay. No, I'm just making sure.
What your plan shows is, your plans look good.
Okay, thank you.
So, I, I think your plans look good, I'm just, but you will take out that 36-inch door, that's the one thing we'd condition.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yep. The 36-inch door comes out. Anything else?
Four-bedroom house limit stay.
Yeah, that would be a condition that, that the home is a four-bedroom home and will remain a four-bedroom home.
Yeah, that's right.
Anything else?
Yes, in terms of square footage, it adds up in terms of meeting 33%. It's over 1,000, though.
No, I measured it today.
I know, yeah.
So, it's over 1,000, but it's 33%?
It's under 33%, but it's over 1,000, so...
It's whichever is less.
Yeah, so...
Yeah.
Which we can, even if it's above that, we can approve it by special permit. So, you're right, the lesser of those two is the standard, and then we can go over it by
As a condition of the special permit.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Want to discuss that?
Nope. Good.
You're good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Does somebody want to make a motion to approve the in-law suite for Four Be...
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry. Sorry. Getting ahead of ourselves, yeah. Do you want to close the hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Did anybody want to comment on this from the public? All your neighbors are happy?
So far.
Okay. At the request of the applicant, could we have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Moved by Judy?
Second.
Second by Drew. Okay. All those in favor of closing the hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carried. Voting on this will be the five regular members. Okay. So, at this point, could somebody make a motion to approve the plans for Four Betty Road as shown in the documents revised with a revision date of 3/8/2023, and the plot plan dated 2/19/2023 with standard conditions, and the home is a, the home is a four-bedroom home and will remain a four-bedroom home? And the fire department requested all the fire, fire detection be hardwired. Anything else? Judy?
Would anyone object to putting the numbers on the, the plan, what the percentages are of the addition?
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yep. So, so that we're clear on the size of the, size of the addition? You can do...
The door?
Yep, thank you.
Get the architect to do that?
Yeah.
And removal of the 36-inch door to allow continuous flow of the, the in-law suite. Anything else? Thank you.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Drew?
Second.
Second by Judy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, so carried. Good luck with your project. Next, we have 11 Winthrop Street. This is... Notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeals, town of Walpole, will hold a public hearing in the main meeting room of the town hall on Monday, May 15th at 7:00 PM on an application from John J. Rooney Jr., case number 23-13, with respect to property located at 11 Winthrop Street within the residence B zoning district. Application is for a special permit under section 123C of the zoning bylaws for modification of a pre-existing non-conforming one-family dwelling that exceeds the impervious surface requirements for residential use within the water resource protection overlay district. We invite all and encourage to attend the hearing. Mr. Mackey, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Phil Mackey, Mackey &amp; Mackey, 1256 Washington Street, Norwood, Massachusetts, as council foreman. On behalf of the applicant, with me is Scott Henderson of Henderson Consulting, the professional engineer, as well as Mr. Rooney, the applicant owner and his contractor, and I am so sorry, I met you earlier, but I don't remember your name. So, Charles. So, we have hopefully everybody here to answer all your questions. Not surprisingly, I have...
A missile.
Have a book for you. It's a pretty short book, though, tonight, so hopefully we will get through it thoroughly. Thank you. One for him. He has got a few more than I anticipated, because I do have enough to get around. So, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, what I've handed you basically is an outline of the requirements for special permit under section 12. I would like to go through it, but I think as you, you see, many of the requirements under the special permit deal with either commercial or multifamily or industrial uses, and therefore really aren't applicable, but I will run through those anyways, just so we can present it, and then I'll turn it over to Scott to talk about the actual design, so...
Okay, before you get going...
Sure.
This applicant was before us a few months ago.
Yes.
And withdrew without prejudice, so...
I'm happy to truncate even further if that would be your pleasure.
We'll take a look at, has the plan changed since last time?
It has. The drainage system is larger and can accommodate more runoff, and Mr. Henderson can go into the details on that. That is, basically, we upped the recharge into the ground.
I'm also, on the plot plan, I'm not seeing the setbacks from the building.
There is a chart to the upper left, I believe.
Okay.
And we meet or exceed all of the setbacks, except for the existing non-conformance in the front yard. That hasn't changed from last time, and the building commissioner has reviewed this and determined the only relief, in his opinion, that we need is the impervious coverage.
Okay. Proceed. Thank you.
Okay. So, that pretty much actually runs through the introduction, so we can skip to the criteria themselves. And basically, the bylaw under section 12 asks for a variety of things. The first thing is all requirements for full site plan review listed in section 13, or ask for waivers for the same. We would submit that the plan before you, I believe, has all of the sufficient details for this board to be comfortable to vote hopefully in the affirmative, and if we need to ask for an official waiver for the remainder, just to kind of run over some of the site plan requirements, we didn't do a traffic study, we didn't do any of the things that are involved with commercial uses. I don't think they're applicable or necessary, and I'm not sure what your practice is these days of actually giving a waiver or just saying that what is provided is sufficient, but we would, we would ask that you consider that our submissions do meet your requirements. As far as the identifiable trigger, the only trigger associated with this project is in fact 123C5, and that is a residential use that will render impervious more than 15% or 2,500 square feet, and as shown on the zoning table, we're at about just a little over 25% impervious. The third criterion, and this is where things start veering from impervious coverage in residential to more industrial uses, discusses a complete list of all chemicals, et cetera, in greater than normal household quantities. I would submit that the criteria is most likely not applicable, noting this is for a single-family home, and there is no expectation that anything will be stored in greater than household quantities therein. Section 4 talks about containers to prevent vandalism, corrosion, leakage, and provide for corrosion, control of spills, and again, this is, in our opinion, more suited for an industrial use where you actually have a warehouse, you have 55-gallon drums or pallets of things, which is simply not the case here. And then the next criteria talks about hazardous waste being generated, including storage and disposal methods, and we would say that we, again, are here only for impervious coverage. We have no intention of generating anything toxic or hazardous, as this is the applicant's primary residence. The next section now is asking for a plan showing the location of said hazardous materials, and as we're not planning on having any, we don't believe that that is applicable to the request of permit, and moreover, we're not constructing any storage facilities to house hazardous materials, so we have really nothing to show you. We then go into schematic profiles for the storage facilities, and I would say, again, that follows along with my entire rationale to this point. And then we get into evidence of approval for, by the Mass DEP, for industrial waste over 15,000 gallons a day. We can stipulate right now there will be no industrial waste generated of that quantity. There won't be any, period, so that is not applicable. As far as underground storage, again, we stipulate and agree that there won't be any storage, underground storage of any such materials. And now we actually get into the requirements that we do believe apply more to the permit in front of you. The criteria under section 124A10 talks about engineering reports that demonstrate compliance with the mass stormwater policy. We would submit that the infiltration BMP design report submitted with the application outlines in detail how we do meet these. We believe we've incorporated best management practices. Again, as I've stated, and Scott can get into more technical details when I'm finished, this is a bigger system that was presented to you several months ago, and if you really think about the intent of the, this portion of the bylaw, we want all the water that hits the dirt in Walpole to stay in Walpole and recharge in the aquifer, and we want it to be clean. We believe we, we more than meet that with this project, and again, I will not take all away Scott's thunder, so I'll let him talk about that here in a minute. The next piece talks about phasing of earth removal and replacement. This is, there are basically two additions to the house, which again, I believe are similar, if not identical, to what was presented several months ago. To the left of the house, it's basically additional living area. To the right of the house is a garage. So, other than the foundations for the same, there's no earth removal, this isn't a cut-and-fill project. Again, it's a, it's a single-family house, so we believe that we meet this, and the site plan as shown adequately describes what we're doing on the site. The last is an analysis by technically qualified experts, such as a registered professional engineer. Certifying the integrity of the underlying groundwater resources will not be degraded. Mr. Henderson is prepared to go at length verbally on that regard, and he has a, a letter to submit to you as well stating the same. And then we get into the section 124D3 that talks about, and I think now we, we are back into the more commercial side of this bylaw, talking about non-routine activities to include vehicle maintenance, storage of lubricants, fuels, et cetera, and we stipulate that there won't be any of these ancillary activities on the site. As far as the fill material to be used, shall not contain toxic solid waste, et cetera. We would submit that there will be no fill used on site that would contain any of these things. I don't actually believe there'll be any fill used on site, period, again, due to the nature of the construction. And then the last piece asks for periodic inventories of toxic and hazardous materials in excess of household quantities, and we would submit that this is not applicable to this project. Again, it's a single-family house to start with, and we're really here for impervious coverage. So, I think I may have actually done that in record time, Mr. Chairman. So, I didn't want to completely rehash everything that you've dealt with before. I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Henderson to talk through the technical aspects, and then certainly answer any and all of your questions.
Thank you. Scott?
For the record, Scott Henderson of Henderson Consulting, the project civil engineer. I'll try not to repeat any of the numerous things that Phil just covered. I'll get straight to the point. The site allows 15% impervious coverage by right. That number is approximately 2,822 square feet. Our project exceeds that limit by 1,992 square feet. The charge in that situation is to find a way to mitigate for that additional runoff from the site that wouldn't normally be recharged into groundwater. So, we are capturing runoff from 100% of the house roof. That's 2,576 square feet. So, we're required to capture 1,992 square feet of area. We're capturing 2,576. So, we're starting from a point of beyond what's required. The charge from there is to capture at least one inch of rainfall from that area. These infiltration systems, there's one in the front yard, there's one in the back, the typical drywall systems, they add a minimum, static volume storage is at least 1.8 inches of rainfall across the entire roof. In reality, as rain enters those, downspouts enters that system, it starts to infiltrate into the ground, so more than that 1.8 inches will infiltrate into the ground. I can safely say that this is more than double the required rainfall that is easily captured and infiltrated by these systems. In terms of compliance with stormwater management standards, that's referenced in the special permit, stormwater management regulations promulgated by DEP do not apply to single-family homes. That said, these infiltration systems and drywells are designed in full compliance with all of the guidance from DEP for this type of best management practice. Roof runoff is the most easily captured, because it is considered clean. You don't have sediment or debris that you would find on pavement or parking lots or things like that, so this is clean water entering the infiltration chambers and being recharged into groundwater, further filtering through the soil media below. So, we can guarantee that we're not causing any sort of pollution issue to the aquifer as a result of the implementation of these infiltration BMPs. And as, as was said numerous times, we do not have a use with higher potential pollutant loading. We're not producing any industrial waste or anything of that nature. It's a typical single-family home, no sheds full of fertilizer or anything like that, so I can say and certify to the fact that what we're proposing here is not going to cause any detriment or degradation to water quality within the aquifer. Can say that on the record. I also prepared a short memo if that wants to be added to the record, just if that's preference, I can...
Just got a couple copies of that. That's fine, we just need one copy.
Quick summary of it.
And that's pretty much it, so we can field any questions you might have from this point.
I have a question on the permeability of the soils in that area. Did you take a look at the types of soils, and is this system going to be able to, or will the soils handle that?
Be able to infiltrate? I looked at several projects in the area that are on record. There's one actually three lots down, and record soil maps indicate that there is typical soils here. It's glacial till, it's going to be a loamy sand or sandy loam, which is, is fine for an infiltration system like this. The installation of these systems has to be inspected by either myself or Carl Balduff, the town engineer, had a written letter suggesting that, and that's typical practice. So, when these go in, we get out to the site, we make sure that what's, what's actually found and what's there for soil that you put these in is adequate, so...
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, there were some comments from...
Yep.
Okay.
So, we have some comments for this. Do you want to read them, Judy?
No.
Okay, I'll read them.
Okay.
First one from the deputy chief of the fire department. The Walpole Fire Department has reviewed the application for a special permit. Building plans, including location of all life safety devices, have to be submitted to the building department for our review. A follow-up Walpole Fire Department inspection will be conducted to ensure compli- A follow-up Walpole Fire Department inspection will be conducted to ensure compliance with the approved plans. We also have from the board of health, the health department has no issues with the request, the property utilizes town sewer. And then finally, from Carl Baldoff, the engineer, I'm sure he's going to talk about the things you just talked about. The engineering department should be notified by the installer prior to installation of the infiltration system for permitting slash inspection. The as-built should show the installed filtration system. And then finally, previous comments furnished to the board regarding the proposal driveway have been addressed. So thank you for addressing those. However, the applicant is required to obtain a curb cut permit for the driveway modifications. So that would just be a condition we would put on this special permit. Okay. Anything else? Okay. Anybody from the public to speak on this case? Yes. Good evening, Mr. Hamilton.
Good evening. I'm going to speak in opposition to the special permit. One problem that I have is these infiltration systems have no maintenance plan. And anyone who's cleaned the gutter knows that it's not clean water coming down that spout. There's leaves that get in the gutters, there's mud that farms from the leaves, and that mud is going to go somewhere. And if it's into the infiltration system, you need to have a maintenance plan. Until we have another water source, we need to be very protective of our aquifer. So I would not be favorable to reducing the impervious. You can get driveways now that can be impervious. So there's other methods. An infiltration system that isn't maintained, I don't think, is a good way to go. Thank you.
Okay.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just very quickly, as part of the stormwater report, I'm using the wrong term, there actually is a maintenance plan in there.
So that's something that is new, Mr. Hamilton, they've added a maintenance plan, which we can condition.
Is it going to be explained a little tonight?
I think it's just a maintenance plan. It's a residential project, but they do say that they will maintain it. And we talked about this at a previous meeting. I actually asked the question, what's the lifetime on these? And, you know, there's a lot of variables with that. But the lifetime of these many times would be, you know, 25 to 30 years is what we were told last time. I don't know if you were the applicant for that one, but...
I was here that time.
Do you still stand by that?
Theoretically, I stand by that if you maintain it, that it can last indefinitely.
Okay.
I have a question for the applicant. Is there provisions put in place for the construction of this installation?
We'll explain that a little more.
To protect the ground while you're installing this infiltration system?
Yeah, we usually do it on the way out. So that's sort of a, you know, sequencing question. You know, you don't want to have, you know, lumber being stored and heavy equipment for any foundation work or anything like that. So typically what we do is wait until the end of the project to excavate that. Equipment that you would use in a project like this for construction is not going to be heavy-loaded equipment, aren't going to be any rollers or anything like that. But we wait until all, you know, the house is pretty much framed, and you have all that ready to put the gutters in, and then excavate that area, make sure it's not compacted when you do that. And that's part of the inspection that Carl Baldoff's letter referenced, is that when we come up for inspection, you check to make sure that that hole, the bottom's scarified, the soil's not compacted, and it's suitable. And then these are installed in places where you wouldn't expect to have vehicular traffic, but as part of the ONM plan, there is guidance to not drive on these. So, although they are traffic rated.
Okay. I know the last time we were concerned with the size of the house. I think that this house now meets the requirements of the zoning bylaws. So the only relief that you are actually entitled to on that is the setback from the road because it's pre-existing. But the sidelines, those are, those meet it.
Fully comply.
Fully comply, except for...
Existing and not compliant.
The existing on the front, which would be allowed. And then really, what you're here for is the groundwater infiltration.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else? Do you have anything else to add?
No, Mr. Chairman. We would ask that you close the hearing, and if possible, vote an affirmative. Thank you.
Is there anybody here from the public that wants to comment on this for Winthrop Street? Okay. Nobody here? So at the request of the applicant, would somebody make the motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Moved by Judy.
Second.
Second by Drew. Any further discussion on closing the hearing? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carried. So voting on this will be the regular members. And so, as far as conditions, let's talk about the plan. This would be approved with a plan for 11 Winthrop Street by Henderson Consulting Services, dated March 28, 2023, as shown. And that includes both the water system and also the actual plot plan with the dimensional requirements for the house. What else, what other conditions did board members want to add? Yep. Reference the maintenance plan in the decision. I think that's it. And that we've reviewed it, and it accomplishes the goals of the zoning bylaw to prevent runoff and retain water as groundwater. Okay.
So moved.
Moved by Judy.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carried. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have, this is for 1245 Washington Street. Notice is hereby given that Walpole Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing in the main meeting room of Town Hall on Monday, May 15 at 7:00 PM on an application of Daniel Martinez, case number 23-16, with respect to property located at 1245 Washington Street in the Residence B zoning district. Applicant is requesting a special permit under Section 5D-4A for earth removal and a special permit under 123C-5 in order to increase the impervious surface area in Area 1 Water Resource Overlay Protection District. All those are invited and encouraged to review the plans and attend the public hearing. Okay. We have a lot of people here, so does the applicant want to come forward and explain what you're proposing?
Tony DiMartino, getting up for Danny Martinez. We're here to just, to do basically a landscape, move the driveway to the front of the house, take the driveway out of his backyard. We seem to, you know, followed all the orders, and I'm a little bit over on the pervious, so, but I think the engineer might not have taken off the driveway calculations for the backyard. So I think I might be able to balance that.
Okay. So how much gravel, how much material are you going to remove from the property?
So the backyard, we'll be pulling out like 800 to put in the front, and then the backyard remaining, we'll probably be able to put another 1,200 yards.
So almost 2,000 yards of material is going to be removed from the property?
Yes. And that's just for drainage. So right now, if you look at topography, everything's going into the neighbor's yards. We're trying to get the backyard so it's like flat and usable. Those yards kind of just go straight up, like at a big hill. And it just sheds into everybody else's yards. So we're just trying to like cut, like through, right through it.
So right now, the property goes up in the, up in the back, so that...
Straight up.
That whole hill is going to come out?
Just, we're going to go right through it so we can plane on, we can take the backyard from his back deck, take the driveway out. His garage, if you see the elevation, his garage is under the ground from the previous builder. So the driveway now will come around the right side of the house, it'll be flat once it gets back there. And then we'll just start going back up, plane it, and then try to control all the water, shed it to the back instead of to the side.
So how is that going to affect the neighbors' properties on the sides as far as...
We'll have sloping into our, you know, our backyard will be sloped on both sides. That way the water, all the runoff from that hill will go to the backside of the lot, and then it drops off like 30 more feet.
To the rear?
Yes.
Into the town, is that town forest back there?
Yeah.
Because I don't see...
Property line, we're still within the property line of like, probably like 60 feet.
Board members have any questions or comments?
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Bob.
Just a question, on that last point, it looks like from the plan, I see on the, I guess this is like the south side of the lot, that the elevations drop from 230 down to about 222. So that's sloping onto your property. On the other side, it looks like the elevations decrease as it gets close to the other property.
Right. So, yeah, it's kind of, the lot kind of goes back up, and then there's, the neighboring has a wall there. It's kind of really weird. But yes, we're trying, yeah, so I can't do anything with a wall. It's not his property, so.
Thanks.
So what's your, are you the build, what's your role in this?
I'm going to do the excavation.
Okay. And are you selling the gravel?
No. I'll do it by myself.
Okay. You're going to just take it someplace?
Yes.
Okay. 2,000, 2,000 yards?
Yeah.
And how long do you think that would take to excavate all this?
Well, we're going to use, like I said, the 800 yards will go to the front. We're going to grab out the front, bring that around.
Okay, so you're going to just...
We're going to construct that driveway that goes down, and then goes down the whole side of the house.
So that's going to be leveled, the front is going to be filled?
It's going to be filled. And the bottom's probably like a four-foot fill, and then a couple of feet coming up the driveway, and then down the side of the house. So that'll get struck, you know, done first. I want to make sure that the driveway's good before we remove the driveway out of the back. And then hauling the rest of it out, I mean, yeah, I'd like to be done sooner than better, get them, you know, the backyard.
So you'll have about 1,200 yards of gravel leaving the property?
Yes.
How do you plan on hauling it off-site? What type of vehicle? Triaxle, 18-wheeler?
No, you can't get, you just, triaxle would be the biggest truck.
How many, do you, have you calculated how many trips you'll have in and out of the driveway?
No.
Didn't they just redo the sidewalk right there?
They did.
Okay. So are you, are you required to do any bonding with the...
I haven't gotten that far. We, this was from last year, they're going into this year, so I'm sure I'm going to have to do something.
What type, sorry, I apologize if you already said it, but the, the type of soil that's back there is the ledge, is it just...
Oh, no, it's two-minute part.
Won't be hammering anything, blasting anything out of it?
No, no, it's perfect drainage material.
Yep.
I think some of my questions are answered in Kyle's email. But facing, facing the property, facing the house, the driveways, the new driveway is proposed to go in the 19-foot directly between the house and the neighbor's fence?
It's going to stay where it is.
Yep.
And then it's going to go down.
Down to the front yard, and it's going to go, this looks like 19 feet between the house...
Yeah, 20 feet, yes.
And the stockade fence that runs around that property line.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to take like 12 feet of that and run the driveway by it.
And then the garage doors themselves face the rear of the property.
So then it comes back around, if you, there's a black line that follows it around, so it'll come around and then come into it that way.
Okay. So I'm sitting in Hidden Circle, and I'm looking up. Hidden Circle is your neighbor, your neighbor, whoever, I don't know who, you're the neighbor. Who's, who's the owner? You, okay, thank you. So, sitting on Hidden Circle, looking up at the backside of that garage, the Hidden Circle neighbor, greenhouse, I don't forget the name. Okay. They, they, their yard is actually sloped, and they have a fence there.
Okay.
So you're telling me that you're going to grade and swale on your own property without any effect to...
No, right now they have effect. Right now, everything is sloped towards their house. If you're, I don't know which house.
Slopes down towards the fence.
Yeah. So I'm going to try to flatten that and pull it back and shed to the back. So any water that comes off the hill, so right now, the material that's there is very good material, it's very good drainage material. So that's why I don't think you have any problems, you know, none of you guys have any problems, water problems, whatever. But right now, my goal is to take the other side of his driveway out, flatten his backyard, which, you know, right now you have this. I want to be like this. And then I just want to go to the back of the property. Now, I don't know if you have the ones with the pool? Okay, so they have a wall, and that's, so we haven't addressed anybody because obviously I got stopped trying to dig up the backyard, take the trees down. So that's why we're here, without the special permit. I can't even fix the backyard. So I couldn't even put it back the way it was because we were told to stop. So that's why I'm here.
Okay.
But when we're done, they're, they're in, well, I could put it this way, if they took their wall down, they'd have a bigger backyard, or whatever, more sight. But the wall is there, it's on their property. So they're not going to be affected at all. That wall won't be affected unless you decide to do something while I'm there.
I agree.
Yeah, it's, he's, he's kind of in a cove. So, but now he's got, you know, the trees are gone. It's, I think it's actually worked out better for you, you know?
Absolutely not.
Everything through, everything through the board, you don't talk back and forth, you just, so...
Yeah, so you have sun in the backyard, that's all.
But really, this is, this is a gravel removal operation, that's what's in a residential area. So we have some comments from the town engineer. And I think really the best thing to do is for tonight, for you to take these comments from the town engineer, address them, and then be able to, you know, you're not going to address them tonight because some of them are probably a little technical. And then come back and, you know, explain after we get a few other questions on this for what needs to, what needs to be done. So, so we've seen the plan, we see what you're proposing, most of us are familiar, you know, we've done drive-bys of the property, so we know what you're talking about. I'm thinking, you're talking about 100, if you're using a 10-yard dumpster, you're talking in 10-yard, how big of a truck?
20-yard trucks.
20-yard truck? So you're still talking about 60 truckloads of material coming out there?
There's a lot.
Yeah, okay. And that's why I think Drew's question about the sidewalk, you know, we bonded. Also, do you have to, have you talked to conservation on this?
Yeah, there's no address.
There's no issues, there's no wetland resources within the area?
I've had everybody sign off, matter of fact, conservation, building apartment, all the way down the line.
Okay. Okay. So what I want to do is just get any other comments, because I think the best way for this to continue is for us to give you the letter from the town engineer, any other comments from us tonight as far as things that you should look at, and then come back for a follow-up hearing on this. Okay. So you've presented what you want, don't go far. And what I'd like to do is have any neighbors or butters that want to say anything or have concerns, you can, you can speak up. Thanks.
Yeah, hi, Stacy Kennedy. I live at One Hidden Lane, so my property abuts the property, the entire, if you're facing the house, the entire left side of our property abuts their property. And as stated before, we do have a, it's not a stockade fence, but it's an aluminum fence along that entire property line. And then when you get to the backyard, we do have a two-tier stone wall with the fence on top of that wall. And that is there because of the, the elevation of the property when, when we bought it, and, and the property line is, is right there. And that is there because of the, the elevation of the property when, when we bought it and, and the property line is, is right there. We cannot take down that wall, we don't, sorry, we don't have that option. My main concern is drainage, so we don't have any issues with drainage today, so that's my biggest concern. I'd like to really understand and make sure that we're not going to have a problem with drainage after this project happens. Again, we do have a pool in that backyard, probably irrelevant tonight, but we used to have an extremely private backyard with all the trees and now we just look at a mess, it is like looking at the desert all day, every day, there's no privacy in our backyard anymore. I'd really like to see detailed plans for what is planned for that property.
Yes. Steve Hendricks, twelve thirty-one Washington Street, I am right in front of the Kennedys. I have the stockade fence along where it's going to be, very concerned, cause it, I mean, we're talking about the back, but the front is where I am and we're talking about adding an impervious surface, basically heading right to my backyard, very concerned about water runoff. And I, I mean, not understanding really what the, the plot pant, plan is showing. Just wanna make sure I understand what exactly is gonna happen and how this is gonna affect my backyard. As I, I know, I mean, there is a hill there on Washington Street and as, anytime we have a rainstorm, I see the water pouring down Washington Street. So if now we have this new driveway come down, is it gonna all come crashing into my yard? So, that's some of my concerns and again, I'd like, like to understand a little bit more and have more detailed plot plans and understand what's going on.
So, you're up towards, closer to Washington Street than?
Yes, yeah, they're, they're right behind me.
So, right now it seems like there's a low spot in front of the applicant's house.
So there's a, a very big hill going down to that low spot, yes.
Right, and they're going to fill that low spot up, that's one of those, one of the things that they're gonna do.
So, it will go, so then they're gonna be up above my yard then, is that what we're saying?
I don't know.
I mean, now, now we're talking about going above where we are.
That's what, that's what we need to know, we need to know the elevations, not only of, you know, looks like this new proposed driveway is coming in differently, but what those elevations are and how that relates to the neighbor's property. Yeah, is this driveway, the proposed driveway going to runoff onto the neighbor's property where right now it does not runoff, I guess, so?
Well, currently the, the driveway is on the other side of, so, no, we, I mean, it's, it's all land in front of their house at this point, so.
Okay, okay, so that's, that's your concern, how it would change the, the water flow onto, onto your property as, that's your concern also? Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, anybody else wanna comment? Okay, so once, once all this material's taken out of the back, the backyard there, is it gonna just be flat?
Well, it'll be pitching towards the back.
Pitching towards the back, and are you gonna plant it or is?
All grass.
All grass?
I think we're gonna think about trees down the, that's, ah, plants.
Are you the owner?
I am.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
This, the application indicated that it's in Area One for water protection, so do we have comments from Sewer and Water?
I didn't see any.
Seeing any, so, something we might wanna?
Did we have anything from Sewer and Water?
Comments from engineering.
Yeah.
I'd like to think, see something from Sewer and Water.
That's actually not on, that's on us to.
Right, yeah.
Would you reach out to Sewer and Water and?
Sure.
Cause I know the town, Wellfields, not too far from this, okay. So before I get back to the applicant, a few things, Drew mentioned the, I think you should talk to the town about bonding this, what you're gonna need for bonding for the sidewalk, if you have that for the next time you come to us, that would be helpful. Also, detailed, detailed plans, right now, a lot of these contour lines end right at the edge of your property and if you're gonna be changing the elevations, the neighbors have said that that's, you know, concern to them, how this water is going to shed either onto, you know, off, off the property. And what I'm looking at is, it clearly shows an elevation of two twenty on the right-hand side of the property, dropping down to two eighteen and then from there, it's hard to say where it's going on, on the neighbor's property. So, we need to see additional elevation so that the neighbors can be protected from any water flowing off, off the property, okay? Anything else?
I had a couple, as far as the construction phase of the project, what sort of provisions you put in place to prevent any sort of runoff from the project site, whether it be silt fence, hay bales, whatever that, whatever your plan is, I'm not gonna design your project, but just to make sure that the neighbors are protected from this. Street sweeping, debris's traveling onto Washington Street with all the trucking, what are you gonna do to mitigate that? And then the big one for me is you're, you're between two schools that I happen to know a lot of children, the weather's getting nicer. What sort of precautions are you planning to take during the construction phase to mitigate any of that?
So that's three things right there, silt fences, dust control, and traffic control, okay.
This is one other comment, Mr. Chairman. Notice on the plan right now, it has four units shown, which look to be to collect the roof runoff. But to the extent that the intent is to sort of grade the site such that all the storm water that falls, not on the roof but elsewhere on the site, is pitched back towards the building. Do you have any other plans to collect the surface water or somehow infiltrate that, basically non-roof storm water?
Just through the lawn, so right now.
Just through the impervious?
Comes off of that there, like I said, pitch, so basically if you're going, it'll look like a valley and just going backwards. So anything that's coming off will be running down through the lawn. In the driveway, it's not a problem to infiltrate it, put a couple more infiltrators in and collect more of those basin. I believe, I can't, I haven't been there in a little bit, but I believe when we're done, I think the elevations like meet each other for the front. So, the only thing you have is a little bit of runoff from the driveway, but it will contain that, so.
Okay, thanks, if you could address that in the next revision of my, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, just a technical question, you're talking about a swale and I understand what that does. Does someone design that, that's got a stamp that is gonna tell us that it's gonna work and the runoff from the yard is gonna go to the rear of the property? Does anyone design that?
Yeah, I mean, it should be all part of the, the plan and if they, cause that's what I'm looking at, I'm looking at the elevations and the left-hand side drops down into the backyard, it's level and there's a missing contour line, but I'm not gonna worry about that now. And then it drops off even more over towards the neighbor's properties. So, you know, that's, that's what, that's what needs to be shown in detail, how this, if this material comes out, how is the, how is the water gonna flow in the area? And whoever signed, whoever does that plan needs to sample.
All right, so this, that's not in this plan that we have?
The swale is not in this.
Okay, so that, that was one point. And would it be beneficial to ask the applicant to stake out the lot lines so that it's clear where these contours are gonna start and stop?
I don't see why it would hurt, but. Well, stake them up for who?
Well, I mean, one case we asked the, an applicant who was doing earth removal to stake out and mark how far they were going into a hill. So, is that something we can ask the applicant to do?
Yeah, yeah. Can you?
Property line, property line.
Yeah, just.
I have it, it's marked.
It's marked now?
Marked, it's marked.
Okay, okay, that's just, does that answer your question?
Yeah, but I guess I'm, I'm just more concerned like where this swale might, you know, can you mark out or whoever's gonna do that, mark out where that swale has been established, slope?
This swale is, it's kinda, like, it's like a valley.
Oh, I know what it is.
Well, the area length is high because of the rock walls and we're trying to come through the middle of it and obviously the, the buddy neighbor on the other side is, is very high, so we're gonna do like two-to-one slope and come down, try to get a platform for a backyard and just keep, just keep shedding the water, so it's gonna look like a valley.
Okay, I'm gonna think about that for the next.
I'll also just.
I, I have been by it, believe me.
Look at the backyard, look at the vision, like a tunnel, just look at this driveway and go, okay, this is where they're going. It's, it's just crazy the way it's built.
So one of the things, the towns by law was created back many years ago when there was concern about, you know, basically gravel operations in residential neighborhoods and that's why we have this, this bylaw. So, you know, there's a lot of, lot of things to consider on, on something like this and it's, how do you, you know, how do you make this, if you're gonna be allowed to do it, how is it done safely and how is it done so it's not detrimental to the neighbors? So, that being said, Lauren, what do we have for a date for a continuation? How much time do you think you need to get all this information?
So, June seventh would be the, the June meeting.
Okay, do we have much on for that night?
Yeah, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, and then, that includes the two continued cases. Same project. Yeah.
What about the, the next meeting in June?
I believe we just have the one.
The next meeting we have is July seventeenth.
Yep.
Does that give you enough time to get your materials? Okay, okay, so do you wanna continue this until July seventeenth and get the materials that you need and be able to answer these questions? Okay, so any other neighbors have any questions or comments? Okay, so, this case will be continued at the request of the applicant until July seventeenth, seven o'clock here at Town Hall and hopefully we'll have, please submit all that materials to Lauren and Patrick beforehand so that they can put it on the website. Okay, great, so, thank you everybody for being here for that case, okay. Good evening, Ms. American. Okay, I'm gonna just read the public notice here, so. Notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeals, Town of Walpole, will hold a continued public hearing in the main meeting room on Monday, May fifteenth at seven PM on an application from Thomas J. Powers, case number twenty-two dash four, with respect to property located at one thirty-two, one thirty-six, one forty, Washington Street and shown on assessors map, lot twenty dash thirty-two in the zoning District B. Application is for a special permit under Section 5B13G of the Walpole zoning bylaws to allow a three-story, six-unit mixed-use residential development at Washington Street and Chestnut Street. All are invited and encouraged to review the plans and attend the public hearing. We have a few pieces of correspondence that we will read into the record. Actually, do we have any comments?
I probably should open one.
Okay, we have from the planning board. Planning board states, I have reviewed and reviewed Ms. American's letter and revised plans and found that he addressed my comments of last September twenty twenty-three, must be twenty twenty-two. Furthermore, I have no issues with the revised sidewalk discussion in the, the third bullet and the additions requested by the fire department. It says, if the, if the proposed design of Chestnut Street is approved, each board should provide a condition recognizing that might have changed, which may, may occur and work in the public way may be included, including revised layout of Chestnut Street must be approved in further action by the select board. The applicant will need to provide any legal documents required, required to achieve this and prepare a plan necessary for recording. The town will prepare any taking documents as we normally do for road acceptances. We have a letter from Deputy Chief Paul Barry, it's got five points. We request fire lane marking signage to be installed on both sides of the accessway shown on the site plan. Only one side of the entrance is marked, two. If approved, the building plans will be submitted to the fire department through the building department for code compliance, three. We request a master key system be utilized and maintained, four. We request documentation prohibiting the use of grills on the decks, five. During the department review meeting, the fire department expressed concerns with the proximity to the proposed Washington Street entrance exit to Chestnut Street, Washington Street intersection. So, hopefully we can get those addressed tonight. I'll also add that this was proposed a while ago, we continued it for over a year and now we're back with the revised plans and see where we are tonight, Ms. American, go ahead.
Good evening, Dan American with Legacy Engineering here on behalf of the applicant. So, the plan that you have before you was recently submitted, there really were not many substantive changes. As indicated in our letter to the boards, we made a few minor changes to some details at the request of the town engineer. And we also, based on one of the comments received at this board, we, we basically proposed that this little corner of the sidewalk be, made more of a trapazoid so that people would be able to, so you wouldn't have to go and take two ninety-degree turns when you're walking along the sidewalk. Beyond that, what we have before you is the same thing that we've been talking about for quite some time now. We settled in on a one-way entrance off of Chestnut Street that circulates through the site and egresses out onto Washington Street. It was originally proposed to be two-way out to Washington Street, but this board suggested that be changed to be a one-way, so we did change that, this narrowed to twenty feet. And the, the deputy chief has asked for a couple of additional signs. I would ask that, you know, those items one through four on the deputy chief's letter, if they could be incorporated as conditions of approval, I think that might be the easiest way to deal with it. And that's about it, I think, we're going back now, I'm recapping some things that we did before. You asked us to try to get a couple of additional parking spaces, which we did by relocating the dumpsters down towards the end of the parking area here and that allowed us to get two additional parking spaces on site. If the select board approves the, the reconfiguration of Chestnut Street, there would be three additional parallel parking spaces on Chestnut Street. And we have concluded the process with the Conservation Commission. Basically, that, that took some time, but that involved some additional plantings here along either side of the old railroad bed here up on top of the walls, they have issued their permit for the project. Oh, and we lost signal. So, oh, head back. Any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
So it's, to get into the parking lot, you'd take a turn off of Chestnut Street into the parking lot and that's one-way in?
One-way in off of Chestnut only, one-way out onto Washington only. And we have signage on there and Mr. Fitzgerald asked that there would be a sign about, you know, note through traffic, so there's a note. So there's a note here that this is a pri, a sign that says a private drive, note through traffic.
And, um, the sidewalk, uh, with the sidewalk that's into the Chestnut Street layout, would that be paid for by your applicant as they build this?
Yeah, yeah, all the work on the plan is by the applicant.
Okay, but there's work that's off the, off the site, I mean.
In the layup of Chestnut.
In the town.
All that work, yes, that's correct.
And right now, when people come down from, uh, when they come down Chestnut Street from Union Street, two lon, two car widths can queue up on Washington Street to take a right and, and a left. With, if this is built the way it's being proposed, it'll be one car length.
Single lane.
Single lane, yes.
Which is the way it used to be, because there used to be parking spaces a lot in there. So this would bring it back to what it used to be like without the, it used to be perpendicular parking, I think, or maybe slightly angled. These will be parallel.
Yeah, um, I guess I've, I've got, I've got concerns that it's gonna really, uh, it's gonna really back up on, on Chestnut Street at, at certain times, so.
So we had a long conversation about this, uh, at the department head meeting, and I've had a lot of conversations with Carl about this. And obviously, this is something that the select board will decide. But, um, the consensus was that, you know, that the intersection here is not operating the way it was originally intended. And that comes with its own, um, risks in terms of, you know, two vehicles side by side, one looking to turn left, one looking to turn right at the exact same time. It causes its own kinds of problems. And there were different viewpoints from the town, but I know the engineering department came down with this, that we should kind of take that corner off and return it to one lane. But again, it will be something that the select board, as the roadway commissioners, will ultimately decide.
Okay, so, let's see.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
While you're reading.
Yeah.
I like the one lane on Chestnut personally, because the site distance under that bridge, if, and right now what happens, and as Dan explained, two cars, one, I wanna go left, someone wants to go right. The guy next to me can't see, and I know I can't go because there's a car coming. And it's, I'm on that, in that section frequently. It's dangerous, and I think the one lane is gonna, if people come in south on Washington Street, we'll kind of flash their lights and let people go. Don't go by them. That's not how that's supposed to work, but I think the single lane, people will figure it out. They'll just, Waze will tell them it's a line there and tell them to take other side streets to get out to Washington Street. It happens all the time. But I li, I do like the one lane, I think it's gonna be safer. And you'll find people who don't wanna queue up are gonna find another way to go.
It will be less chaotic.
It will be, it will be le, very much less chaotic.
Yeah, definitely.
Um, I did have a question on the lighting plan, Dan, on, um,
Sure.
C5. Is that, are there adequate pole lights in the rear? I, I only see like one at the far back. And then there is, looks like a double. I like a lot of light. It's kind of wooded back there to the
Well, a lot of light, but we're not supposed to shed light off the property.
Right, well.
It becomes a delicate balancing act. So I have a pole, I have three poles along the driveway. So one, two, and three along the exit driveway. And then I have a double-headed pole in the middle of the parking lot here, and then another pole at the end of the parking lot. So there's, and then there are light fixtures on the building itself. So I think there's enough light. You know, we always have to try to balance that.
Right, I just thought, you know, I looked at that location at night one time, and it's, I know with the building there and building lights, they'll be, it'll be, you know, fading, fading away from the building, but I just, you know, I like to see light for people.
I like the style of the building. It shows an office, uh, is that gonna be on the first floor where the clock ta, like the base of the clock tower, is that an office?
That's the idea. If they can make that work, you know, that'd be part of the first block commercial space. Uh, we did submit updated, uh, architectural plans. Uh, the only change to those plans was that the, uh, a couple of the units on this smaller end were originally gonna be one-bedroom units, but they're now gonna be two-bedroom units.
They're all two-bedroom.
They're all gonna be two-bedroom.
Each of the residents have their own access doorway to the back of the property or what?
Yeah, there's a walkway along the back. So you go directly behind them.
A200?
Yeah, so here's the plan. So along the back of the building is basically, uh, a walkway deck, right? And that will lead to doors to each of the units. So if you look here, this is across the back of the building here. So each one of these units, uh, right here on the common wall would be a set of stairs for each unit to go up to. So they would have, there's one, two, there's six sets of stairs that lead them from the back of the building up to their units. And their units are the second floor and the third floor. So each unit has second floor, third floor. It's kind of like a townhouse configuration.
And the commercial businesses only have access through the opposing side of the building? Or is that?
The commercial spaces will also have some doors in back, um, but their main entrance is on the front of the building.
And as far as mail or any sort of deliveries, it's expected that they're, they're at each individual residence's doorway? Or is there, it's like a communal, I guess, I don't know if that's been thought of?
We'll have to figure that out with the post office. Sometimes they want us to just put a, you know, sometimes they put, we'll put a box on the building.
Okay.
That's why I, sorry.
Want me to close that door?
How does this footprint compare to the original building that burned down?
Uh, the original building was bigger. Uh, hang on a second.
As far as the footprint?
Want me to close that?
It's distracting to me.
So this is the third shot at this project, and this is the smallest building. There were two prior projects that were approved with pretty substantially larger buildings than this one. But the original footprint of the building, and I don't have the square footage, but you can see
Okay, yeah.
See that right there?
Yep, I can actually see it.
That's the original building, and it actually extended over the, uh, the old rail bed as far as I know. So, uh, our building is smaller than the original building.
Yeah, so it actually, the former building actually extended to where you're now gonna have the
The driveway.
The driveway going out.
Right.
And the intent is to preserve the clock tower?
Yes.
And if you can't preserve the clock tower, would there be something built in place of it to resemble the clock tower?
Yes.
I think I remember, I brought this up to me before, and I think the applicant was here, and said that was very structurally sound, that tower right now.
It was reinforced by H and V.
I asked what the condition was as to potentially saving it. Cause I, I think that's a very important part of this.
Yeah, um, I, I would just want to make sure that
If it falls down by accident during demo, that it gets built back?
Well, yeah, uh, I mean, that's, and that would be, um, you know, I think people of VSWALPOL have said that that's something that they, they wanna see in the, in the building. Okay.
Yeah, and, you know, when they get into the logistics of, you know, designing the building around it and all of that, if we, if we have to come back here and talk to you if, if something needs to, you know, change or how it's incorporated into the structure, we'll come back. But as, as of now, the intent is to build a new building around the clock tower as it stands there.
Ms. Jan?
Yes.
Um, Dan, the, on the first floor, the, the back hallways where the commercial space second egress is through the back as well as the, the condo owners are coming in, that, I, I'm gonna call it a, a column. That back column, it, does that change because it's a shared space? Does it change the percentage of living space above commercial? Because it's not, it's not commercial, that back, that back column is not commercial. It's shared with the residents to come in and out.
I don't believe so. Um, but I certainly can review that with the building commissioner.
Okay, I mean, I only ask that because of the formula.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
Some square feet above. Now, the commercial space, if that back rear column wasn't there, they'd just go out into the, onto the deck and into the driveway.
And we also have the footprint of the clock tower in the commercial space and not in the residential spaces, so that offsets some of that. But, you know, certainly, we can provide all those calculations to the, we confirm all those calculations with the building commissioner.
And the storage back in those little foyers are storage for who? The landlords, I mean, the tenants or the owners?
I'm not sure. Do you know, Tom?
On the first floor.
Yeah, um, I believe that's for the, uh, when you're going up the hallway upstairs.
So it'd be for the, it'd be for the, the condo owners?
Yeah.
Okay, and when you go, you went to that back area as a, as an owner going up, there's no door. There's no door at the bottom of the stairs. They'll go up to, uh, open their doors to their units?
Yes.
I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a stair. This is the stairwell coming up.
I guess my point is, someone using their rear exit to the, from the commercial space, if they are
Comes up to a door.
Are basically, would be able to go up into someone's condo.
But not get it?
No. They're not, I mean, there'll be, I understand there'll be a door, I just didn't know why there wouldn't be a door at the bottom of the stairs. That's my question.
Oh, well, we could put it
I'm just asking, just from a an apartment owner, and I'm not, I like doors, so someone else on the outside can't come in.
Everybody gets their own entrance.
Yeah, they have their own door.
Yeah, they have their own door.
It's just, that's the door entrance.
Right.
So that's the first gating door, and then there's another door up here.
Okay. All right, okay.
What about the mechanicals of building?
Yeah.
Sorry, Judy.
No, that's okay, no, I was gonna ask about the mechanicals, but you can, you know more about it, so you can ask.
There will be a mechanical room, um, on the first floor.
So where are you gonna put the condensers for the air conditioning?
Uh, they would have
They get an outdoor union, you're gonna mount one of the seven.
On the wall, in the back.
Okay, sorry, figured, just checking.
That looks very similar to the original building. There's a lot of
I think it'll look nice.
I mean, if this is what you build, it looks good.
It'll look nice.
Dan, I actually have a question. Can you access the top of the tower? In the cen, I mean, I noticed there's a
I don't know.
Can you get up through the tower, Tom?
Yes, yeah, yeah. You need, um, a 10-foot step ladder to get up the first one. Another 10-foot step ladder to get up to the second one. And then there's a stairway going on the side.
Well, I mean, I mean, for the new plan, not currently.
That's the existing condition of the, of the tower.
Oh, no, yeah, but the proposed, are they modifying the tower at all?
They're not gonna
On the first floor?
They gotta iron all that out. I mean, they, they would like to, you know, utilize the first floor as part of the commercial space. Uh, the upper two floors, I don't think it's gonna make sense to incorporate that into those spaces, but
I just wanna get a weather tie to make it look good.
It's not all
Okay.
That hasn't all been ironed out. That's like nitty-gritty kind of building design stuff that hasn't been figured out yet.
I just noticed, get the windows, and there's no other way to access those.
No elevator in there?
No elevator, no.
Go jail up there? But, uh, I'll just say, I think everything looks good. My only concern is the, the traffic. But it seems like we've gone back and forth with that, so, um, as far as the zoning board, we would be approving only the, the structure. We're not talking about the sidewalk or any of that.
Approving the onsite stuff.
What's that?
You're approving the onsite stuff.
The onsite stuff.
Yeah.
So, um, anybody have any?
Come to order.
Where, where are you with the planning board, Dan?
They're just waiting on you. I'm, I have an appointment with them on Thursday. If you guys, uh, took action tonight, I would go forward with the planning board on Thursday. I think they're ready to make a decision. So conservation first, then you guys, then planning board.
And they're doing site plan review?
Correct.
Okay. So as far as a special permit, um, I guess really the question is conditions and, uh, referencing the plans, I, um, I think it's, I'll just say, I, I think it looks good. I know people have been looking forward to having this, um,
Would be nice. Our office have been working on this for, for more than a decade, so it would be nice to get this done.
Do, does anybody in the audience have any questions or comments?
The audience is thin out.
You're the applicant?
He's the applicant, yes.
Okay.
So I guess, conditions would be the, um, the, the four comments from the deputy chief.
Yep, and
Clock tower preservation.
Yep, preserve, yeah, we'd wanna word something that the clock tower is to be preserved, and if it is not preserved, then a clock tower of the same height would be, um,
Replicated.
Replicated, uh, not gonna say the exact same style, but
Right.
But, um, same height, uh, with
I would say the same height would be really hard, because it's 80 feet tall right now. So if the building property said I couldn't save it, and maybe it fell down and it's like bad happen, we probably only wanna do 60 feet, you know, because right now it's
It's not 80 feet tall though, Tom, it's, I think it's 64. The clock tower was measured in one of the prior iterations of the designs. It's 63.4 feet to the top of the tower roof presently.
So What's the height of the building?
It's, it's less than 40. I don't remember exactly what the height of the building is, but towers are exempt from the height limitations for structures.
So I actually, I'll just speak from, uh, board members comfortable with this, Rob?
Yeah, no, I just note there was one other, uh, proposed, uh, condition, I think, that, uh, the engineering department
About changes in Chestnut.
Just about allowing for minor changes to the layout as approved by the select board in the future, just to give them flexibility, presuming that things could change a little bit here and there.
I'm sure something out in Chestnut Street will change when we get to that step.
Yeah, so I think that's an additional condition that that's, otherwise, I think this is great. Would love to see this project happen.
Yeah, and one of the things, uh, I feel comfortable from the zoning board perspective that what we're approving is everything on your property. We are not talking about the parking on, on, um, Chestnut Street. That's really not, that's not for us.
You may just wanna have some language in the decision so that it's clear that that's the case, and that as a result, if the select board changed anything outside the property lines, then it's not gonna require us to come back to you.
Right, uh, but further, we are not approving, we are not approving anything on Chestnut Street, cause that's
be submitted to the zoning board appeals retained with the case record. This kind of goes back to what happened with 133 High Plains Street, as well as what occurred with the, the animal hospital on Route 1, whereas there may have been a non-substantive change to the site plan that impacted the final revised version of the plan. So, I know we referenced the plan of record within the decision. I mean, it's up to the boards, but that's something where I know, you know, it's not affecting the actual use.
Well, yeah, or it can, whatever wording works. If it's a non-substantial, substantial change, then that's fine, but if, let's just, let's just say that they come back with the park, the, the flow of, the direction goes from Washington Street.
Yeah.
If it's a different direction, well, that would be substantial, so.
Yeah, we always...
Do you expect the plan is going to change?
No, but sometimes they ask for little things to be added. We always issue up another revision because we have to put the planning board's conditions onto the site plan. So, the planning board, if they, when they vote to approve, one of the conditions is you got to give us a revision that incorporates all of our conditions on, on a sheet of the plan. So, there's always a plan revision. This plan will not be the plan that the, the planning board endorses, and they may say something like, you know, I don't know, add three bushes here or something like that. I don't know, you know, little things. I don't anticipate anything major.
Okay. Well, either way, I think we don't have that plan in front of us, so what we do is we reference this plan, and if you have to come back with a revised plan, as long as it's minor, it should be, you know, no problem.
Well, I guess Pat's thought, and my thought too, is, I mean, you could invest...
His, the other choice is just keep it open, but what you're hearing from us is...
The planning board won't close it until you guys close it. It's like, it's a, it's a catch 22. I got to close it here before they'll act on it, so that's fine.
Well, we close it, but we reference the plan.
Right, understood.
That's, I mean, we're not going to not reference the plan.
No, no, I know. The suggestion was just that there be some language that, you know, minor and insubstantial changes after the fact don't require a modification of the special permit.
Yes, that's fine.
Yeah.
We should have that.
Yep.
Right. We don't care if some bushes move around for site plan.
Right. That's all we're suggesting.
But we do care if, you know, the parking area changes or if anything else. Okay.
Get that language.
Okay. So, is everybody comfortable with this?
Yes.
Can't wait to see it. Okay. Do you want to close the hearing?
Yes, please.
So moved.
At the request of the applicant, somebody want to make a motion to close the hearing? Moved by Judy. Second by Dave. Okay, all in favor of closing the hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carried. Okay. Next, does somebody want to make a motion to approve the plans for the East Walpole clock tower with the last revision of April 6, 2023, and the architectural plans dated March 1, 2023, with conditions from the fire department as outlined 1 to 5 on the letter? And...
Would that be 1 to 4, Mr. Chairman? 5 is not really a condition.
Yes, right. Sorry, 1 through 4. What other conditions do we have?
There was the one condition from engineering.
Condition from engineering, and we also talked about that if something happens to the clock tower, a replacement clock tower will be constructed to the same, same height. We're not going to say the exact same dimensions, but the same height as what's there right now.
Then, what is it, non-substantive changes?
Yeah.
No need to...
You know, non-substantive changes can be approved.
All right.
Will, will be approved.
I'll figure the wording.
Yeah.
So moved.
Moved by Judy. Second. Second by Dave. Any further discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carried. Hey, one night, good luck with this.
Thanks for your patience on this. I appreciate it.
We can't, if people want to see this done, done nicely, it's a great project. Okay. Okay. So, we also have some minutes from, to approve. Okay, we have minutes from March 20. Does somebody want to make, somebody that was here want to make a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Judy.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor of approving the March 20 meeting minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carried. We have minutes for April 5. Can you review those? Does somebody want to make a motion to approve the minutes of April 5?
So moved.
Moved by Dave. Second by Mark. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
Abstained.
You were, you were there, though.
Yes, sir, but there's things on there I didn't participate in.
Okay. And we have minutes from April 26. Does somebody want to make the motion to approve those?
So moved.
Moved by Drew. This was when we did the wave.
This isn't that hard, guys.
Please enough. Second.
Second by Bob. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
Abstained.
Okay. So carried. Okay. Does anybody have anything else for the board?
I do. Joe, I'll send out the digital copy, just because it came at the end of last week. The Housing Appeals Committee issued their decision regarding the board's appeal to, to the Darwin Lane and Pinnacle Point case. So, just to give the footnotes version, essentially, they did not issue a decision in our favor, and Willen said remand those cases back to the board for consideration and review for the comprehensive permit process. When that remand date is, I still need to figure out from town council. So, that's something that's going to probably be on the very near horizon is Darwin Lane and Pinnacle Point, 40B is coming back. And I'll send that out tomorrow morning, just for everyone that digitally.
So, these are the cases involving our invocation of Safe Harbor?
Yeah.
And they said we could not do that, essentially. I mean, I...
Yeah, essentially, we had two arguments in terms of, our argument that the fact that we were, the case that granted the board Safe Harbor via the housing production plan, one of our arguments is that, well, they couldn't apply for a building permit during that year because they were under appeal. They did not find that to be a substance, a good enough argument, basically, to, to go in reverse with the board. So, yeah.
Okay. So, so is that on us to reschedule that, or is that on the applicant to reschedule?
That's where I'm a little cloudy, and I need to talk to KP Law, just because they didn't issue a date in terms of, it's remanded to the board, but usually, but it's a follow-up to remand within a certain timeframe, so they didn't have that included in the decision.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that, that update. Anything else for the board? Does somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Judy. Second. Second by Drew. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. Good night, everybody.
Good night.